Eileen, please open up the meeting.
Howell Township Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, February 26, 2024, 7:00 p.m., regular meeting. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 11, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on December 11, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 11, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barillo.
Here.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Stanton is absent. Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Scottson is excused, and Chairman Sayah.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Everyone, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Andy, can we have a swearing-in of the professionals, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. You swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
I do.
Please state your names for the record. Charles Kungliff.
Christine Gough.
Your professionals are sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda, approval of minutes, regular meeting, February 12, 2024. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Roscoe, Ryan, Scottson, and Sayah. Do we have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, sir.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Okay, thank you. Eileen, any vouchers?
No vouchers tonight.
Eileen, do we have any correspondence?
I have one thing for correspondence. Case number BA 20-101A, AARSHW Property LLC, Rock Solid Realty LLC, will be carried to a future date with notice. An extension has been granted to the board through May 31, 2024. May 31, 2024.
31st, 2024?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so for anyone that's here for case number BA 20-101AARSHW Property LLC, this is a use variance, bulk variance, and amended final major site plan. This application will be carried to a future date with notice, and the expiration date is May 31, 2024. Any other correspondence, Eileen?
No, that's all for tonight.
All right, thank you. We have no resolutions?
No resolutions tonight.
Got it. Applications before the board. Case number BA 13-15 Alpha 2, GF United. Extension of time and amended conditional use variance and PF site plan with bulk variances. Description: Application of GF United as applicant and owner seeking one-year extension of time on approvals granted on 12/14/2020, and amended conditional use variance and preliminary and major site plan approval with bulk variances for relief of conditions. Hotel Julia and Papa are the prior approval on premises known as Block 141, lots 13.01 and 14 US Highway 9. Expiration date, February 29, 2024.
Appearing for GF United Realty, my name is David Weinstein, attorney for GF United Realty. I'm sitting with my right to John Ploskanka, who is our civil engineer. Thank you. Bye, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Andy?
Yes, would you like me to swear in?
Please.
Mr. Weinstein, we're going to swear in Ploskanka, okay? Thank you. Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell your last.
John Ploskanka, P-L-O-S-K-O-N-K-A, professional engineer, Manalapan, New Jersey.
Mr. Ploskanka is sworn in, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ploskanka, can you just quickly just put your credentials on the record? You're licensed in the state of New Jersey?
Licensed in the state of New Jersey. Been in business for 50-plus years, appeared before this board and many, many boards in Mammoth Ocean County.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Weinstein?
Yes, first thing that we are seeking is a one-year extension of time on our variance. Unfortunately, contractors did not move at the speed we'd like them to. We've made substantial progress since the last time we appeared before you, but we believe this will be the final extension of what we seek. Mr. Chairman, do you want me to go through my entire list of what we're seeking? Would that be easier, one thing at a time?
Charlie?
Yeah, just to clarify, Mr. Chair. So they were previously before the board, they were granted a one-year time extension through December 14, 2023. So this is the second one-year time extension, I think, of a maximum of three. It would be till December 14, 2024. Just to give the board some context, this application was for a conditional use variance. There was an existing auto service station on lot 1301 on Route 9. It's on the southbound, closer towards the freehold end of town. The applicant purchased the property next door, which contained a single-family residence. They were proposing to demolish that residence, expand the parking onto this neighboring property, consolidate the use of the lots. I believe they were also adding a, like, a bay addition to the north side of that existing structure there to facilitate a lift, to do repairs on, like, school buses and the like. And the site driveway right now, so there's a significant amount of, like, impervious, actually, within the DOT right-of-way. They were removing a lot of that and consolidating the driveways. There was a lot of areas that were not supposed to be parked on, the DOT had kind of restricted over the years, so they were kind of taking out all that excess payment and just cleaning up the driveways. As part of that approval, there was an Avis rental car use in the front of that building. I think the original approval, there was an agreement that when that lease was expired, that that user would go away from the site and it would just be the auto service station. That's still the case, correct?
Yes, Avis is no longer there. We may deal with Avis to abandon location. There is now, the only tenant is GF United Realty. We have no intention of adding any other places other than the auto repair place. Close.
And as part of that prior approval, they were kind of ahead of the game. They were proposing, like, two EV charging spaces. That was before the state adopted laws that made it now basically a permitted use in, like, all zones. The prior approval carried a condition at the time because of, like, the multiple users and, you know, when the Avis was expiring, for the EV to be only for the private use of the site, they filed this amended application seeking to lift that condition, making it open to public. I think when they came for their first-time extension, we put on the record that we really didn't have an issue, but they still needed to technically come to the board to remove that condition. Since that time, I think when they came back for the first extension, the original engineer kind of went by the wayside. They transitioned to Mr. Ploskanka. There was some turnover, getting all the drawings and everything like that. They're in the process of trying to get their access permit from DOT. They've circulated for us, to us, a revised driveway alignment and orientation. Right now, what was approved by the board was a little bit different than this. There was a one-way-in driveway, kind of where the driveway, do you have the old one there? Yeah, let's see. Yeah, so you can see there are those gray areas that are hatched. Those are all impervious. That was within the right-of-way that was going to be removed. The right driveway would be the one-way in into the site with the expanded parking onto the formerly residential property, and then they had a one-way egress driveway on the south end of the property. This is adjacent to a car wash use, and I guess as part of their DOT application, DOT said, you know, that driveway is too close to that neighboring property, so they asked them to consolidate into one two-way full-movement driveway. I have no issue with that, other than I issued some comments to Mr. Ploskanka via email about, you know, maybe shifting it a little bit to make it more functional, so there's not a jog, sidewalk into the site, curbing along the frontage, and the like. Mr. Ploskanka, you're confident you guys can accommodate that?
We agree, yes.
Okay. The two other things that I wanted to note with their amended application request was, one, it's a tight site right now, right? If you look at the area, as you can see, they've got a significant amount of vehicles parked on Lot 114, which is a southerly property. So to facilitate construction of the garage bay and the site improvements on the existing developed portion, they were seeking approval temporarily during construction to park vehicles on the northerly lot for a period of time while construction starts, so that way they can do those improvements and then move everything back and finish the improvements on the lot 14 to the north. I would have no issue with that, other than we need to stipulate maybe some time of time restriction on that, you know, from start of construction, six months, just so this doesn't linger out there and that doesn't become a permanent use of a grass, you know, property for parking purposes. And then the last thing, they asked if they could start construction prior to having their DOT approval in hand. Typically, we wait till all outside agency and C approvals are in hand for them to start construction. You know, if they were to proceed with same and the board would have no issue, I would just let them know they're proceeding at their own risk if DOT had a, you know, realignment or something like that with their site driveway. And then other than that, there's a couple of conditions in my letter from the prior approval that just need to be perfected. They were conditioned of the prior approval. It's like, you know, they agreed to Title 39 on the property, so they got to, you know, proceed with that with the township prior to COs, recording the ONM manual for the basin, which I think we agreed to it in form and content. They just got actually recorded by deed. And then I think, so this site is in one of those weird areas on Route 9 where there's not public sanitary sewer, so they were proposing to eliminate the existing septic on the auto service site and put a new one on the expanded to service, you know, the expanded use. I believe they got, you have board health approvals for the proposal?
We have that approval, yes, Charlie.
Yeah, so it's just they have to get certificate of abandonment for any wells or septic for the old system, but other than that, I think that encapsulates what they're asking for.
We've already consented, as the attorney for GF United, to the six-month limitation. We've consented to all of Mr. Koff's recommendations, and so basically, as the attorney, what Mr. Koff is stating, if the board were to approve it, we consent with everything attached requesting of us. There is no dispute.
Thank you, Mr. Weinstein.
Yeah. The last comment I had, I think they had previously provided a, as the condition of the prior approval, the board asked for the lots to be consolidated with the use. There was a deed that was filed that put both properties under one deed, didn't merge the lots and create one single lot for tax purposes, so I would ask that that just be followed through as the condition approval. Do you have an issue with that?
Actually, the problem right now, we don't have an issue with it, but we're waiting for the town to do it. Something has to be triggered by the town.
Okay.
I've been in conversation with Mr. Bono about that, and apparently, we've done as far as we can go. It's not with the town.
Okay.
So there's no objection at all.
Okay. Yeah, so usually the tax assessor has to approve the lot designation and the address, and then they can go ahead and record the deed, subject to attach a review and approval. So once tax assessor approves it, that should just be a formality at that point.
Great.
Therefore, we consent.
Thank you. John, anything?
I would only add that the parking on the vacant lot during construction only be parking, that no repairs be made on any of the vehicles, that that's just an area for storing of those vehicles, that we shouldn't see any mechanics out there performing anything. Everything should still be done within the confines of the building.
I think with the only exception that involves moving the vehicle, I mean, you may have a car that has to be jump-started just to bring it in, or...
I have no issues with that.
But we absolutely, we do not want to do repairs on that property because it becomes a environmental issue because of leakage.
Correct.
So we're not, we would definitely not do that.
All right, thank you, John.
And then just, sorry, just to clarify too, so that's six months, it's from the start of construction. So once you get compliance from the board perspective, you got to have a pre-construction meeting with the township engineer improvement. It would be six months from that date.
Right, we want to work with the towns. The town has a hard start date for which to tackle a time period from, and a hard end date, so it's not open ended. We consent to that.
Great, thank you. Christine?
Nothing on my end.
Okay. Fellow board members?
Is that photo with or without Avis?
It's without Avis. The reason why I can tell is if you look at the roof line, the sign was removed, and you'll see there's no red sign on it. There used to be a big red sign that said Avis. You'll see it's not there. I believe it's without. I mean, I can't see the sign.
It's been a year, over here.
It's been over a year since they've been there, so I suspect...
Was it a sign, or the picture, I think, said September 6, 23?
It's been over a year. I apologize, I don't know the exact date, and I know it's been a long time.
Is that the normal number of cars that are there? I know, I know, by fluctuation, but is that...
It's approximately about that. We try to keep the cars out of the front of the property because that's right-of-way, but obvious, that's an old picture. We got rid of the house, so that's definitely not it.
This program only goes so far. It's dependent on the third-party company doing aerials, so this is the latest or the earliest that we have of the property.
Great, thank you.
The house is now gone. There's nothing there, it's just a vacant lot. So what you're seeing right there is just dirt. We actually leveled it. I've actually personally walked on it. There's no hazardous stuff on it. I'm, my wife wasn't happy because I'm a bit of a klutz, so I didn't trip over anything, so I thought it was pretty good. So, but there's no, there's no house there, there's no pipes there, it's just dirt, is the best way to put it. John, I think you've seen the same thing, right? So that's what it looks like right now.
So the water in the sewer's been capped?
Yes.
Okay.
The previous usage has been capped, and the gas has been capped, and it's all been done according to the code. It's part of the development.
Great. Okay, any other questions here?
Since Jennifer isn't here, I'll just ask, sidewalks, are you going to be putting them in?
Yes.
Yes, okay. It is on the DOT plans.
Yeah, they, this plan that was circulated to us had sidewalks along the entirety of the property frontage. They didn't have it coming into the site. We requested that they make that addition to the plan.
And we consent to it.
Sounds good, thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
That's an old picture. See the Avis sign?
So that's 2021 and 2022.
The overhead picture showed, I believe, two storage trailers. Am I correct with that?
Yep.
Is there a plan to move them?
Get rid of them.
Get rid of them completely?
Get rid of them completely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Roscoe? Mr. Hughes?
No, sir.
Okay, so, extension of time to December 2024? What day?
December 14th.
14th, okay, thank you, Andy. That's what they're asking for? This is the second extension?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the extension of time.
Okay, with all the conditions that have been put on the record?
Yes, sir. Everything that Charlie reviewed included with that approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. I believe it sounds like they have a plan thought out of how they want to proceed with this.
So, apologizing, just to clarify, it's the extension of time and the amended use and site plan approval with, you know, the access permit changes and all that stuff that we talked about today.
Yes.
So it's clear for the record.
Yes, moving the driveways and complying with the DOT changes.
With all the amendments, yes.
Charlie changed to clarify that, you know, not jog around in there.
Right, the removal of the addition that the EV spaces are for private use only.
Right, we're modifying that so that it's open to the public, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Oh, the EV, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry to interrupt, amended conditional use variance, preliminary and final site plan with bulk variances. That's actually the complete application.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Ryan, you second this motion?
Yes, I...
Because you say you're, there's a plan in place.
I continue to second this, and it sounds like they have a plan in place, and I think they'll carry it out.
Thank you, sir.
To its conclusion.
All right, Eileen, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Application's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weinstein. Thank you, Mr. Ploskanka. Okay, next up on the agenda, case number BA 23-10, Royalty 19 LLC, use variance and preliminary major site plan with bulk variances. Description: Application of Royalty 19 LLC as applicant and owner seeking use variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval to use the existing building containing 12,232 square feet storage space and 837 square feet of office space with associated improvements in the ARE3 zone on premises known as Block 37, Lot 24.02, 19 Miller Road. Expiration date, April 4, 2024. Mr. Page.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening all. Nice to see everybody in person.
Yes.
Chairman, members of the board, board's professionals and public, my name is Kenneth Page. I'm an attorney with Hyalver and Page, and this evening I have the opportunity and the privilege of representing Royalty 19 LLC. The principals of Royalty 19 are here. They are the owners of the property that we're presenting to you for your consideration. Before we go into the substantive presentation, I'd ask if you could confirm, receive our notices, and if we could establish that the board has jurisdiction for us to proceed.
I can confirm, Mr. Page, the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the number of opening statements, I try to be very efficient. We have a total of five witnesses. We don't think that that's a long list.
Are you being picked up by the microphone?
Yeah, I might have a hard time.
Eileen is...
It's working.
It's working, I just want to make sure. Okay.
You're very soft, Ken.
Bigger voice?
Yeah.
It's okay. You move it closer to you, that'll be better, Ken. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's perfect, all right.
Oh, good. We have five witnesses this evening. Louis Zugner is the principal engineer. He designed the site that we'll present to you, and he will be the first witness. The second witness is Solomon Friedman. Mr. Friedman is one of the two partners in Royalty 19, and I've asked that he describe his business to you. It is a fascinating, successful business that these gentlemen started nine years ago, and it has grown to be a very, very, very successful business. Still a little bit of thunder, they import from Asia, from China, India, Italy, and other European countries, high-end crystal, silverware, anything that you could put on the top of a table, is the way they describe their business. They import that, they, then they distribute it. Their primary customers are Amazon, they sell to Amazon, Wayfair, those types of businesses. And they have a limited amount of business where they have single sales. You'll hear that they have been in this business together for nine years successfully. Mr. Friedman is the second witness. The third witness following Mr. Friedman is Mr. Stephen Rudasti. Mr. Rudasti has spent the last year working very hard to make Mrs. Jennifer Beam satisfied with the architecture. That's his goal, it's his goal in life, and he's, again, done that, or he's done the work. We'll find out if Jennifer is going to compliment him. The next witness is Scott Kennel. Scott is our traffic expert. He'll go through the traffic and the onsite circulation. And finally, the last witness is Mark Remsa, a professional planner, who I've had the privilege of working with for over 40 years, and he'll present the planning testimony that supports the relief that we request. I wanted to share with the board, before we got into the substantive presentation, the history of this property. And the history of the property was not hard to discern, because this board heard this application on a number of occasions, and the resolutions that were written are very informative. The last resolution that we were able to secure from your offices was a resolution that was adopted in 2004, and an individual came forward to ask permission to use the building on this property for watermelon sales.
Yes.
And, remember it, watermelon sales and also other dry goods, food goods. And he had, as his presentation witnesses, he had a gentleman who had come before this board in 1970 and had asked for permission to use the building as an egg distribution center. And the egg distribution center, according to the testimony that is memorialized in the resolution, involved 20 to 30 tractor-trailers a week coming and going from the property. When the watermelon, and that's part of that resolution, when the watermelon gentleman came forward, he indicated that he was anticipating, he had a seasonal business, during the off-season, he anticipated that he'd have a couple of trucks a week, but typically 12 tractor-trailers a week. And you're going to hear this evening that these gentlemen have a very established business that has eight tractor-trailer movements a month, eight a month, roughly two a week, and that in addition to that, they have, once a day, they have UPS comes once, they have postal people come once, and FedEx once, and every once in a while, a phone call to SDHL if they would come. So you'll hear that what was 30 tractor-trailer movements went down to 12 tractor-trailer movements, and we're asking for two tractor-trailer movements and three or four vans a day. The last persons who came before this board made a lot of commitments to clean up the property, to remove concrete, and a lot of that never happened. The property is in very similar condition as it was when you saw it the last time. You can hear a lot of commitments from these people that before they even take occupancy, they're prepared to make very substantial improvements. One of the improvements is the removal of a 15,000-plus-mile-square-feet concrete slab that according to the testimony of Mr., I think it was Profaci, I get the name correct, the gentleman who testified as the original owner, indicated it was a building that he owned that burned down, and the slab was left. We're going to take, we're proposing to get rid of that slab, serves no purpose. Thought it was worth sharing, although I can tell from faces and from some board members that I just told you things you already knew, but it's worth sharing that this building has a history. We're going to ask you for permission to use it for the distribution of, I'll call it, tabletop goods. With that as the opening, I'm ready to ask Mr. Louis Zugner to stand and be sworn, and Mr. Louis Zugner to stand and be sworn, and we'll begin our direct presentation with your permission, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Page, shall we just swear in all of the witnesses? Lovely. And this way we can have a flow here?
Sure. It's very fun.
Andy, you'll capture everybody, yes, please? Thank you.
Sir, do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, shall help you?
I do.
Please state your names, spell your last, starting with Mr. Z.
Louis Zugner, Z-U-E-G-N-E-R.
Scott Kennel, K-E-N-N-E-L, with McDonough and Ray Associates.
Stephen Radasti, R-A-D-O-S-T-I, Principal at Perez and Radasti Associates, Architect.
Solomon Friedman, F-R-I-E-M-A-N.
Principal.
Mark A. Remsa, R-E-M-S-A, a professional planner and licensed landscape architect.
The witnesses are sworn, Mr. Page.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Then, Mr. Zugner, please share with all your professional and educational background.
Good evening, Ken Louis Zugner, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, I'm the founding principal of the firm Mid-Atlantic Engineering, I am licensed in New Jersey and a number of other states, I have been practicing for over 20 years, graduate of Virginia Tech, and I've been, before numerous zoning boards, planning boards, including this board.
We accept your credentials, Mr. Zuckner.
Chair, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Zuckner, would you share with the board the exhibits that you'll rely upon? We have hardboards to just, I know that as we go through them, you'll be able to put them on the screen.
Yes.
So if you could.
The first one, will pick me up if I'm loud enough?
Wait, speak loud, it's good, I can hear, can we hear them?
I can hear them.
Okay, good.
The first one is titled 19 Miller Road Aerial Exhibit, this is to show the overall area and identify the property, the mark pieces they go, or?
Ken, have they been pre-submitted, or?
Everything has been submitted electronically, there's nothing new tonight.
Hold on.
Second.
I'm still just, I'm just over.
So we received three this afternoon, we have a rendering.
Is that one of the new ones from this afternoon?
Yes, all three are from this afternoon.
Oh, okay, so then we'll mark those?
Okay.
Since they're not pre-marked.
Okay, go ahead.
The last exhibit looks like A.
So we have three files that were emailed this afternoon, they have one titled 24 by 36 Rendering, have one titled A Survey, and the last one was a 226 24 Rendering, which looks like this.
Right, so that, that'll be the third one I bring up.
Okay.
So the first one probably also labeled rendering, but it's on the sheet itself, 19 Miller Road Aerial Exhibit.
So that was not included, I only have three files, the three that I just noted.
This one right here that you have up.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay.
And so that would be A 28?
Very good, thank you.
The next one, you have it as a file, digital file that says survey, but this is the boundary, topographic survey, the existing conditions of the property.
A 29?
And then the third one is the rendering, today's date, it's a colored rendering, it's a composite of different plan sheets in the plan set.
A 30.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm gonna ask if you could, in a narrative, introduce the property to the board, the board's professionals and the public, using the aerial exhibit, if you could introduce it, its location, its size, and its zone.
Shows a little better on your television screen, but we've identified in the middle of this board, the dark outline, the perimeter of our property, and then given an aerial image to show you a little bit of the surroundings. So, to the left of this property, running diagonally up and down is Miller Road, you can see a little bit to the left of that, obviously Wayne's Pond Road, intersection somewhat north of us, north is up on this board, and then another diagonal line across to the right, the back, rear of our property, this is a railroad right away, railroad tracks. You can see how further, some mobile homes, just above us, this is a nursery farm just to the north of us, and then adjacent to us across the street is all wooded, you can see a few buildings and a home just below us, to the south of us, and then there's the great crossing, that's sort of a bit of where we are.
And our property's zone and size.
So it's a three-acre property, we are in the ARE3 zone, so the agricultural rural estate, we are three acres, you can see obviously, if we move on to the existing conditions, but there are buildings and shown earlier, I believe, we had up some actual live, done live, angled photos of the site, you can see what's there.
Charlie, the closest riparian we have to this, going to what, Lake Louise?
Yeah, there's no wetlands or riparian mapped in the vicinity of the, of the property, so, like I said, it's, you got Miller Road on the left-hand side, the west, and then the east, you got the Conrail railroad line, you got a existing farm property, which I think at the time of the prior approval, Ken alluded to, was a farm property, and then you have property to the south, which certainly I think might have a residential component, but also may have a commercial component to it too, to some extent, so, yeah, but there's no map wetlands or anything, or riparians in close proximity to the property that I would be worried about being regulated for this development.
Thank you. Go ahead.
If we could, next exhibit, just briefly describe the existing conditions, I think the aerial photograph that, the perspective aerial photograph is also very valuable, but if you could describe what's there.
So, again, we've seen some images on your television screen, but as we go in a little closer, obviously there are existing buildings on the property, or commercial buildings, and Mr. Page talked a little bit about the history of those. Towards Miller Road, you can see in this plan, pretty obvious of what must have been the foundation of an old building at some point, and right now it's a warm concrete slab on the, on the property, and then as you come up to Miller Road, there's a driveway with two entrances out to Miller Road. Rest of the property, to either side, you can, there are some trees, and then to open along towards the back of the railroad, but there are some trees laying around the property, but no big dead stand of wood on this property itself.
I think it's time to go to the site plan and do an executive presentation of the site plan, and then together we're gonna go through a lot of the detail.
And maybe right before I jump off of this, just to note a couple of key elements, you know, this concrete slab I mentioned, as we look towards the site plan and improvements, obviously that's something that was a key element to remove, but that we'll get rid of. And then I'll show you also in this huge driveway, some of this northern end of the driveway is in what ends up being the 50-foot farm buffer to the north, so that was also a key element as we went to design to look to eliminate and remove.
And the septic system.
And, yeah, so this site in its current state has a septic system that's not on the property, it's actually off the northern property line. I'm sorry, one sentence before, removal of the farm buffer?
No.
No, 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 so, the northern driveway that comes out to Miller Road is in the farm buffer.
Oh, okay.
We want to remove the driveway.
Okay, okay.
To preserve the farm buffer.
Thank you.
So part of this process will be constructing a new septic system, also doing well for this site, and we're going to eliminate existing septic, not even on the property.
Where is it?
Where is it? You can see, it's in an open area north of our building, just across the property line, I mean, Ken probably can't see it, but that's, I identified it as an open area of trees.
So, and just to give the board some extra background on this, so, when this was before the board in the mid 2000s, the site driveway that Mr. Zuckner's talking about, once you get past the concrete slab, it actually jogged onto the neighboring farm property, and there was, I believe, they were an objector to the application, and went through the court process, and I think they were required to relocate or remove that driveway from the neighboring property owner, so, it's not surprising that the septic system is there too, it just may not have been known at the time of the prior, prior approval, so.
Point out, our clients own the property, our clients own the property, but there's no occupancy of the property. They're, if you were to go there, you'll see they're doing a wonderful job of maintaining it, a very nice condition, but they do not use it for any purpose at all.
They own the property next to it? They own the property next to this?
No, no, they own the property that we're presenting to.
All right. The septic system's not being used right now.
Yeah, the septic system, came, that's the way it came, yeah. So, if we could, if you could take us through an executive overview of what our clients proposing to do on the property, and then I want to spend time going through the details.
So here you can see it in color, what we're, the changes we're making, and sort of in general, obviously we want to improve the building, there's reconfiguration to the driveway and access to the property, we're providing vehicle parking spaces in front of the building for cars, passenger cars, and then we're also reconstructing two trailer or truck loading spaces that load to the building, you can see that to the south, where the building jogs back, create circulation for that to work. There is a new proposed outdoor trash enclosure, that'd be the masonry, brick-based trash enclosure to match the building. There is a small proposed addition at the back of the building, it's a slightly darker color at the back of the building. Obviously, architect will talk more about the building itself. I think a key component of this, while it wasn't an improved site, the buildings before, there were no stormwater management on the existing site, so we are constructing stormwater management that's primarily in sort of the little space between the parkings, you can see there's a turnaround circulation area, there's vehicle parking, in between that we're creating a fire retention pond. There's also a small tank to help us collect and drain water from where the loading bay would be, because that's actually a little bit lower than the surrounding areas in the building. And then, a big element in terms of trying to adjust and improve is a significant amount of landscaping being proposed. Our property has, you know, to the north and to the west, what we qualify as farmland buffer, and then buffers on the other two sides would be residential buffers, so, those areas have no landscaping essentially at the moment, there are some existing trees, part of this proposal is to landscape those buffers.
I think that's a good executive summary, and I'm gonna, with your help, go through a lot of the details. I'm gonna start with grading, appears to me that there's little to do in the way of grading, you're taking out concrete, you're redesigning circulation, is there any major grading, cutting, or filling of the site?
No, it's a relatively flat site, and essentially will match what's there, there is some grading because there's work, there are a few comments, and there are a few letter, a few small areas that we can improve upon, and we'll do that.
And stormwater management, I made the statement, there is no stormwater management system in place at all, so there's nothing that cleans the water, collects the water, stores the water, and I noticed in Mr. Cunliffe's most recent report, January 2024, that he had some comments about the stormwater design, I'm gonna ask if you could describe what's there, and then have you conferred with Mr. Cunliffe about his comments?
Mr. Cunliffe, we have spoken, he's been very helpful, I won't speak for him, we have, as I said, this fire retention basin, we will collect water, including water from the building, we will have some detention there, so we'll control the rate of runoff through that, we will infiltrate water there, and in the small tank, so we'll achieve that. So the three pillars, we're going to improve water quality, we're going to obtain some recharge, we're going to reduce rates of runoff through less than existing condition. On top of that, this goes to another element of the site development, key component of what helps us with the stormwater is we reduce the impervious coverage from its existing condition.
Seems measurable, down eight percent or so from?
Close to 10%.
Close to 10%. Mr. Cunliffe is here, and he most certainly will speak for himself, but are you comfortable that you can and will satisfy the open technical requirements in Mr. Cunliffe's report with regard to stormwater?
Yes, I'm very confident, there are a few design items that we need to address, your role goal, I think we will certainly achieve.
I'd like to go to lighting as the third element of the site plan, and I have been begin by saying, I note that there's a comment in the staff report that we're slightly over, we're at 0.8 foot candles, we're 0.5 is the ordinance max, can you fix that?
Yes.
So, we're not, we need no relief on the intensity?
We do not want, ask for relief if you want to fix that.
You'll fix it, okay. And there's also a request that all of the lighting on site be 3,000 Kelvin, could you confirm that's the way it's designed?
It will all be 3,000 Kelvin LED lights, and the board knows this, but that's the lower temperature, not the harsh one, the calmer, cooler temperature.
And every one of those light fixtures is dimmable, correct?
All of the LED fixtures can be programmable, so you can completely control intensity, a number of little cells in it that are on or off.
Our client will testify that his business is five days a week, 10 o'clock to 5 o'clock, 10 a.m. to 5 o'clock, there's no overnight activity, dimming this site to whatever the police or you find is most comfortable, we could go all the way down to 25% or even turn off lights, there's no night activity, there's no second shift, it's 10 a.m. to 5, those will, that will be placed on the record as a command.
Monday to Friday, Ken?
Monday to Friday, Friday's short, our clients close early on Friday, and they'll sneak in there on Sunday to sit at their desks and do their paperwork, but that's the only thing that'll happen on the weekend, Monday to Friday, maximum 10 to 5, Friday's most likely, 1 o'clock is the witching hour.
And I would also add, this is the site lighting, the back half of the property behind the building is obviously not lit, each door to a building gets a light, and Mr. Radasti talked about that, it's code to have a light at a door, but it's not a site light, so the lighting is just this one.
And Steve found a way to put the lights so that they're in and overhanging, so that they're not bulbs that are showing, so he'll do that when he's up. Landscaping.
Maybe just quickly, just to make sure it's on those, you know, clear, all of the outdoor LED lights are like the shoebox style downward directed with shields, so there's no.
Spillover, yeah, okay, good. So landscaping, I'm gonna begin by telling you that we've had two inspections of the property with Shari Spiro, and wish her well, disappointed she's not here to tell you about those inspections. During one of them, she noted that there was a very nice, large oak tree, and she was concerned that our driveway was too close to it, so you're gonna hear that we moved, we couldn't move the tree, we moved the driveway. She also had some very substantial comments on landscaping, including a requirement of indigenous species, and a most interesting comment about the grass lawn behind us. Your engineer has asked us to make certain that we don't encroach into it with cars or trucks, and we won't, we have a way of making certain that doesn't happen, Louis will describe it. But Shari pointed out that there is indigenous wildlife and flora in the field, including milkweed, which is, Shari will tell you how important milkweed is, so we've been asked to preserve that entire field in its natural condition, and I trust that your plan shows that we're preserving that.
We are preserving the field, it'll be, the milkweed is what she had been so keen to preserve because of the monarch butterfly.
Right.
We learn something every time we meet.
Sorry. In order to make certain that there's no vehicles that go onto that area, we've used a landscaping element to make certain that can't happen, would you share what you've done with landscaping to make sure that we can't get out there?
You can see in this plan that, you know, again, it's sort of along this northernly property line, and then on the other side, we landscape right alongside the buildings, and we'll preserve space, obviously, so that someone can go back behind the building and do some maintenance, but no vehicle will have space to drive past the building.
And if, if the board felt that a fence was, helped, we could also put in a fence, but the design was to use landscaping to make sure that we couldn't get back there. If you could just describe the types of landscape materials that are along the buffer, I know that we don't have a berm, but if you could describe the intensity of the plantings?
So, there are buffer plantings, it's a mixture of evergreen trees, flowering trees, shade trees, darker shade trees, there are also obviously perennials and grasses, there are both flowering and evergreen shrubs. There are both flowering and evergreen shrubs. Effort is on native. In terms of numbers, it's 116, this is for the total site, evergreen trees, 32 shade trees, 19 ornamental or flowering trees, like a red bud, and then 166 shrubs, plus all the planting. These are, those numbers include, obviously, the key elements of the buffer. There are a few foundation plantings along the front of the building, and then the base itself that we're, because it's a fire retention basin, that also gets that.
We also met with the shade tree commission, we met with the environmental commission, we had multiple meetings with the fire chief, but a shade tree commission pointed out that they wanted to see a woodland management plan. Your office responded to them in writing, sharing with them a description, a narrative description of the tree removal and the tree replacement. If you could confirm, well, I'll confirm that we've delivered that letter on October 13th to the shade tree commission, and it's part of your record, but do you have those numbers? The numbers of trees that?
The trees coming out, I believe, is 48 trees.
And trees going in?
Trees going in.
I'll give it to you. I think it's about 150. 137 trees going in, 48 coming out. Sounds correct? So that was, the shade tree commission's request was addressed. There was also a request to get rid of his white pines and to use certain hardier versions of evergreens. If you could confirm all of the requests that were made by Shari who would make to your plan?
Yes, we, I will continue to work with our.
If we could move from the landscape element.
Mr. Pate, real quick question. On the disposal area, is that just our providers around, or do you have kind of a wall or fence?
The trash enclosure, we'll have plantings around it, but it's a masonry enclosure.
Okay, it's gonna be masonry and planting, okay.
The gate, obviously, is not masonry itself, but the gate is wood that opens.
Yeah.
The three sides are masonry, and they would be done in a similar brick facade element to a architect.
Okay, that's great, thanks.
Parking, you'll hear from our clients, there are two principals, two full-time employees and three part-time employees. On a very, very busy day, there'll be seven people in this building. And you'll also hear that the public is not invited to this building for any purpose at all. What is the parking arrangement that you have designed?
So from the rest of the loading areas, we've kept the vehicle parking separate. It's in the front of the building. There's a total of eight spaces there. The requirement by doing the floor area calculations is six spaces, so we'd see that. And other spaces, one, of course, is an ADA space, and one would be an EV space.
There's a request that it be EV level two, level two?
Yeah, that's just the level of the charger. Anything less than that really isn't worth charging a car on, so level two, I think you can charge a full car up in like 45 minutes or something like that. And then the law does allow prescription for them to be installed over a six-year time period, but to make it easier on the town, we asked that they be installed up front prior to issuance of a CO. Is that an issue?
No, not an issue at all. There will be exactly what was asked by Mr. Cunliffe at one of the parking stalls. And onsite circulation, I'm gonna ask that Mr. Kennel describe it, but I think it's important to point out that we had a horseshoe driveway. One of the driveways was too close to our neighbor. Very strong comments from Ms. Beam to get that out of there. You were able to do that, and now have one central driveway designed to handle all of the vehicles that we anticipate to the site.
Correct, and we believe the circulation works well according to volume of traffic will have the trucks. And now the FedEx trucks will have no problem amongst the passenger cars.
Mr. Chair, in the course of handling this file over the last year and a half, I got to say goodbye to Chief Lewis as he retired, and I had got to begin working with Chief Prochnow as he took over. There were reviews by Chief Lewis, and we addressed his concerns. We also went back in October to Chief Prochnow. His perspective is a little different, and you'll see in November, he issued a letter that said his issues have been resolved. He wanted us to make certain that we had fire striping, fire lane striping on the site, and the dimensions of the driveways were all acceptable to him, as he indicated in his letter. So from parking and circulation, I think trash, if you just locate the trash enclosure and confirm that it's designed to, so that a trash removal vehicle can access it easily.
Yeah, gas the trash, truck can remove it easily. It's here near the stormwater pond.
So it's not in the rear. The ordinance states that the trash enclosure is to be in the rear. We took a lot of steps to make certain that there was nothing in the rear. So it's in the front, it's landscaped, and a waiver is requested for that. Finally, the fact that there's no monument signs, we just point out that there's no signage that's required as part of the site plan.
There's no proposed signage.
And Mr. Chair, the only signage that you'll hear from the architect will be numerals on the building to identify its address. Our clients have no need at all for business identification. They are not a destination the public is not invited to. I have nothing further of Mr. Zugner, other than to ask that he, if he has reviewed the staff reports, and is he comfortable that he can and will address the open technical requests?
Yes, the remaining technical items, I'm confident we can address all of those.
Charlie?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just to add some points of clarity. So going back to that whole septic on the neighboring property, I just want to point out that the property to the north, the farm property and the property to the south, there are lots 24, 2401, 2402, so conceivably at one point in time, there were probably one lot, and it's, you know, part of the subdivision, you know, maybe there wasn't accurate mapping on where the septic was, and that's why it's on a neighbor property. Regarding some of the relief, we had the, cited the refuse enclosure in the front yard, being accessory structure in the front yard. As you can see on the rendering, they're proposing landscaping around that. I think, obviously, it would be ideal for that to be located in the rear and, you know, maybe screened by the building from the public right of way, but you heard Mr. Zugner talk about, you know, wanting to maintain the farm buffer to the north and then the residential buffer to the south, so, you know, by adhering to that, it gets difficult to provide a driveway to the back of the site without removing part of the building, so I don't necessarily take exception to that.
There's also all that plant.
Yeah, there's a significant amount of planting that's going on, too, so.
Oh, I mean, with the protected, the milkweed.
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 Yeah. Yeah, so no, I just wanted to note that I didn't take exception to it. Lock coverage, you heard Mr. Zugner talk about, they're reducing the impervious coverage by about 10%. This is in the AR3, which all our ARE zones has lower percentages of what's permitted. This is 12 and a half maximum, they're at like 26.2, so they do need a technical variance, although they are reducing it, as Mr. Zugner indicated, by about 10%. The stormwater, I, I'm pretty confident that Mr. Zugner can work out any items that I had in my letter. A lot of it was just, you know, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is. The reduction in the impervious coverage by 10% helps satisfy a lot of the quantity control and, you know, potential impacts to neighboring property owners. Sorry, I'm just scrolling through my letter and picking out a couple of different things that I wanted to make note of. We talked about the EV charging. The site driveway does have a site triangle requirement. It's hard to tell from the rendering, but there is existing vegetation along the site frontage. Some of that, understory, is maybe not necessarily the best-looking stuff, so anything within the site triangle, if that can kind of be trimmed and pared down, just so there's no issues with sightlines, I would ask that that be made a condition of the approval. And then I had some comments in about there about like availability of public sewer and water and things like that. The property is not within a map sewer service area. The closest sewer is like behind the site, on the other side of the Conrail right-of-way to like existing mobile home park back there, so, yeah, it would be a very difficult thing to get sewer to the property. The septic system, Mr. Zugner, it's individual, that's standard Monmouth County Board Health approval, right? It's not anything above 2,000 gallons a day or anything like that, right?
Well, 2,000 gallons a day. We've actually already done some soil testing, so Christopher Labert from the Health Department has confirmed the suitable soils.
And then I've talked with the engineering department, they're not aware of public water to the site, so any well, obviously, would be septic to Board of Health approval. And then the last thing I would just say is, you heard Mr. Zugner and Mr. Pape talk about the lighting and how you could dim it past beyond hours. You know, I'll defer to the board on what your discretion is on, whether you want it dimmed to 25%, whether you want it completely off. Maybe we hear from the neighbors, and you can come to maybe more of a definitive feeling on how you guys want to go with that, so. That's all I have. I'll let Jen maybe talk about, I know they don't have curbing sidewalk along the frontage and all that kind of, or not Jen, Christine. Christine, you talk about that.
Did you forget my name?
Yeah.
So first, kind of just to reiterate what Jen was saying about the trash enclosure, while it is in the front yard, I do think that this is a better location for it than, you know, trying to provide access to the rear of the site, encroaching on that field. We're preserving for Shari with the milkweed and all of the additional landscaping they've done. So they are providing additional landscaping around the enclosure to kind of buffer it, but I think this is really, given the constraints of the site, the best spot for it. They are not providing sidewalks, so that is a waiver that would be needed, or you could require them to provide sidewalks. That is up to, you know, the discretion of the board.
The applicant has no issue with sidewalks if it is your pleasure?
As Jen always says, you know, there's no sidewalks around, but someone needs to be the first person to put them in. And I think that is really all for the engineer that we would have.
Thank you, Jen.
That Charlie didn't already.
And, Mr. Chair, the last, I apologize, the last thing that I'll say is, anyone driving up and down Miller Road, I think even if you go on Google Street View, you can see that it's not necessarily in the best condition. You know, you've heard some testimony regarding how many site trips they're generating from tractor trailers, and compared to prior approved warehousing uses for the site, you know, if there's anything that the applicant would be willing to do, you know, resurfacing the roadway, even if it's along the frontage, as part of like the curbing in the sidewalk, you know, this is a use variance application, would certainly be a positive towards the application.
Charlie? Do we want to try to get an easement for future road expansion? Is that prudent?
So, and I believe, and I'll look at their survey again, but I believe that they already have what they're required right of way with, recommended in the master plan across the frontage, but if they didn't, would that be something the applicant would be willing to comply with?
Compliance? We thought that we did, but if we haven't?
Yeah.
Compliance with the master plan by dedic, it wouldn't even be an easement, Mr. Chair, it would be simple dedication to the town.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you can see what Mr. Aguilar is sharing from Google Street View, that the road, obviously, at some point was in better shape. It's in that shape regardless of whether or not the applicant gets their site plan approval, but, you know, they are adding some tractor trailers to the site where it's been largely dormant for probably the last 14, 15 years, so if there was any inclination on the applicant's behalf to do any kind of roadway improvements across the frontage, I think it would obviously be a positive checkmark in, you know, a use variance application, but I'll leave that to the discretion of the board and, you know, the applicant.
Thank you.
It's a type of issue, Mr. Chair, there'll come a moment this evening where I ask for a five-minute recess to chat with my clients, and during that time, I'll confer with them on that point.
Okay, great, thank you.
We missed a point, though, Charlie, we missed the driveway acts, the driveway restrictions. There was a recommendation that we have a restriction coming out of our driveway, we missed it.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, I think, and Mr. Kennel can get up there and talk about the trips coming from the site, I think there was a bias towards left turns out of the site, you know, turning movements, that's going down to, I think, Lakewood-Farmandale Road, which is a county road, you know. If the board is concerned, or we have some concerned neighbors about, you know, trips and trucks and things like that, I think it's, we have required turning restrictions at the site driveway at the past, you know, certainly would probably be more preferable if they go towards the county route, but, you know, maybe we hear if there's any concern neighbors and, you know. Certainly, eight tractor trailers a month is a lot less than, I think, going back to, what, the 70s, there was, what'd you say, Mr. Pape?
30 a week.
Yeah, 30 a week, so.
Well, that was during the Vietnam War, so, you know, feeding the troops.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. True, true, okay. Yeah, right.
The restriction on the driveways that requires trucks to make a left as they exit, and no truck being allowed to make a right, it is in the staff report. We did have the opportunity to review it with our clients. Making a left is the most efficient way to get to 195. We do not have a problem with that restriction.
Okay.
Is there a bill like that? There were any need for?
Business purposes, there's never any need for the smaller delivery trucks to make a right?
We would ask that the small vehicles be permitted to make the right-hand turn, but the?
The large trucks.
The larger trucks, and we can come up with a definition, we'll put up the signage, and we'll also do a Title 39 if you request.
Have you guys wanted to go to the right?
Yeah, Amazon's turning wherever they want.
Yeah. Tractor trailer, right.
Okay.
Great. Hey, John, do we have any, any violations on this site?
So as it stands, as of today, there is a requirement for the property owners to register, actually re-register this property as being vacant, so that has come due January 1st. It still has not been done. And then any property maintenance issues that may go along with that, I believe, and I'm not sure if it's the same septic system that we were talking about, but there is a large void to the north, I believe, of the building. You could probably fit a small Fiat. There was some temporary fencing that was put around that hole. We would just ask that someone just go out there to ensure that there is some kind of protection, I believe it's fallen down since then, and any other property maintenance issues that are related. So once they register, code enforcement goes out and does a preliminary inspection for any kind of violations, and I'll just give you a sampling of these pictures we're taking in April of '23, so they may not be the current conditions, but these are the types of things that we look for, graffiti. There are some that also show, and I'm guessing because of the vacant nature of the property, you got kids, adults, just trashing the place, these are the kind of things that we look to avoid. They may have been taken care of since then. I have not been on this property in quite some time.
Hundred percent, including?
Thank you, John. We, we're good, thank you. Fellow board members, any questions for the engineer?
No, they have to talk about a little bit, the sidewalks, I don't think it's. Yes, right, sorry, sorry. About the sidewalks, I mean, it looks like there's none down that road, so clear that up.
Yeah, I think I agree with you, I think we should.
I mean, it's fairly rural, right?
Yeah.
So do we want to keep it in a rural state?
Yes, I think so, and I think we'd be better off using the money somewheres where we need them.
Yes.
And that's just my.
I think it would interfere, putting sidewalks in would interfere with the flow of the driveways the way they want to put them in.
Okay, I agree, okay. Just wanted to get clarity on that, thank you.
We're good?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ryan, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay. Sabo?
In Ms. Beam's report, at section, what's she got, section four, part C, with buffers, the number one, she, I know she's pretty much a stickler with the buffers, and there was something, stormwater retention, detention basins are not permitted within the buffer area, whereas proposed drainage swall and a portion of the existing building are located within the required buffer, farmland buffer to the north, and the covered loading dock proposed to the enclosed within the existing footprint is located within the required residential buffer to the south.
The existing building encroachments, which are fairly small, we are leaving on the site and ask for relief from that, but if you could go through the other revisions that were made to the plan to eliminate?
Right, so there, to both edges or both sides of the existing building, the south side touches the residential buffer fairly, like?
Inches.
And then the north side, same thing, you can see sort of there's a line, it's in that buffer, the existing building. So those are. So those are, I would really.
Right, and I think they provided testimony, it is in our letter, you know, we understand. We would prefer not to have anything in the buffer, but it's an existing building that's there. And I think they provided testimony about kind of beefing up the landscaping in those buffers and working with Shari to make kind of, you know, the best landscape buffers they can. So while it is an encroachment and they do need a variance for it, it's, they're not proposing anything new within the buffer there. It's already existing there.
Right.
So, and just to add clarity to that too, right, so the swell, that's basically, stormwater basin is, holds a certain volume and then at some point it overflows, right? So you don't want that just to overflow onto the neighboring property. There's a swell that maintains the existing drainage pattern and gets it to the, to the right of way, so it's not going on the neighboring property. And that swell is within where the existing site driveway is. So it's not like there's not disturbance there already. They're taking out the driveway and regrading the swell to make sure that water flows to the right of way and not onto the neighboring property. So I don't have an issue from it, with it from an engineering perspective.
It makes sense.
Okay. In her section with parking and circulation, she mentions the loading ramp in the front yard.
There is a loading ramp that exists, and we're proposing to reconstruct that loading ramp if we want to identify its location.
It's on the screen here, but to the south side of the property, it's an existing building, we'll throw it back. That is the existing loading ramp. We are rebuilding that and repaving it, but it's staying at the same location. It goes to much of the other conversation we've had about other items tonight. You don't permit loading areas in the front of the building. But we're trying to do everything in the front of the building here and not drive around the building to the buffer to the back of it.
I guess that's, that's a variance, that's part of the.
Yes.
Let me picture it on the screen.
Right, and while it is existing, they do need the variance for it because of the proposed use.
And as I'm looking at the photo and I'm recalling the testimony from the 2004, where the gentleman said, "My large building in the front burned down." I think that when that building existed, this was on the side of the building. When that building burned down and was replaced, it kind of became the front of the building.
Mr. Pape, you know, the railway is becoming, I believe, active again. So would your client be willing to file for a Title 39? Just, you know.
Mr. Chairman, I was invited to a meeting at the township where the railroads were explained to me, and I was asked to bring it to all of my clients' attention. And they would tell you, I told them that there's a railroad behind you and there's an opportunity to, perhaps there's an opportunity to have a siding, because it is an active freight line right behind it.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Any other, any other questions for the engineer?
With the proposed addition to the building that's on there, there'll be four emergency exits that'll be going from the exterior?
Six altogether, and Mr. Radasti is prepared to go through all those.
Okay, and they're going to empty out into grass or onto a concrete platform as they exit the building?
Each exit door would have a concrete platform right outside of the door. But then, no, there wouldn't be sidewalks from the emergency exits. They would go out into the grass.
Because the two in the back kind of look like stairs going down and wasn't sure what that was.
Uh, because of the floor and the grade to that point, right, it comes out on the concrete platform. And yes, it would have stairs to get it to grade.
And then just into the field?
And then just into the field.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we're good with the engineer. All right, Mr. Pape?
Yes, thank you. I'm going to ask that Mr. Solomon Friedman join me. Mr. Friedman is one of the two partners, Mr. Bachman, his partner is also here. Mr. Friedman lost the toss, so he gets to come up here.
Excellent.
I've shared with him that over the last year and a half, as he describes his business, he does it so beautifully and we enjoy listening to him. And I've told him, this is a very friendly place and he should relax. But he has taught me this is his first time speaking in public. So I may, I may help with some of the questions to, I'm going to ask if you just take a moment and tell, you were sworn, but who are you and are you one of the principals?
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. We started the business, my name is Solomon Friedman and my partner is Avram Bachner. We worked together already for nine years. We started, I got married here in Lakewood and to a Lakewood girl, so I moved to Lakewood. I went to BMG School. I studied together with Avram, and that's how I got to know him. And we still study. Every day after work, we go and we study. Then, you know, at times the families grew, so we had to do, you know, start making some money. So we, we went, we started thinking what to do and we started, we started going to, Amazon was around, and we started to look things what to sell. So we went to the local stores and we picked up small items. And we went to a little higher-end stores and we bought more expensive items. And we used to bring it to our garage and to his garage, and we sold it online. And as we were going, we're buying more and more, we started selling more. So we needed more space, so we started using his basement. So we, the trucks used to come there to his house. And we used to pull down all the boxes to the basement up and, you know, till we decided that we got to find somewhere to go. So about seven years ago, I, we saw a sign for rent. There was a sign, so I knocked on the door. There was a lovely guy, he passed away this year. Mr. Schuster, the ex, I don't know if you know him, but Eddie Schuster. So he was, he had a place for rent. So we went in there and I signed contract, not contract, a lease, and we moved in there. And we started, we started there selling our items. Then we, from then, we used to, we decided that we got to get into the market, buying our own stuff. So we pretty much did some research, we found some connections, and we started importing. We started importing from China, from Italy and from India. We started bringing in our stuff. We started with a smaller quantities and now slowly we were growing, we started bringing more stuff. Then the space got a little too small, so Mr. Eddie Schuster, he had a different location down the block. So we asked him if he could fix it up for us to let us move in. So he cleaned out the place for us and we moved in there. And that's where our stuff, that's our bigger warehouse. We have, yeah, most of our inventory is there. We still have in the first location, one location was where we are on is 1084 Brook Road. And the other location is 821 Brook Road in Lakewood, New Jersey.
I'm going to interrupt you. So those, that's where your business is currently operating?
Yeah.
It came a moment you bought this building that we're talking, showing to the board, correct? You bought this building?
The building, the 90 Miller Road, we bought, right.
You own it and you bought it for?
For use for our business, yeah.
Let me, let me ask you some very important questions about your business. You heard me try to describe your business. I like when you describe it. What are the products that you're importing from Asia and from Europe and, and selling?
So we sell tabletop items, everything that goes onto the table. So it's pretty much dishes, glassware, mugs, cake domes, trifles, butter dishes, Moscow meals, all type of items that, placemats, everything that pretty much sets a table. So it's like, pretty much whatever napkin holder, we look pretty much to set the table. And that's where we go from, we have all type of glasses, all type of crystals and vases and, and that line.
And you told me that your major purchasers are people like Amazon fulfillment, Wayfair fulfillment, Walmart fulfillment. So you bring this over here and then you're selling to them and they're distributing.
Right, so what works is that we get a container at a time. We order an item, it comes in a container from, let's say, from China. And the whole container is filled with items. Let's say it's a glass, glass, a glass cake dome, let's say, right? So the whole container is filled. It's not on pallets. It comes, and the whole container is filled. Then we have our workers, they take out the, so that's, we have two full-time workers and two part-time workers. The part-time workers are to unload the containers. The two that are there with, together with us, you know, we all work together. We're pulling, he's pulling. We unload the container and we put it onto pallets. Once it's on a pallet, we shrink wrap the pallets. Then it goes into the warehouse. It sits there. And then once we decide that we got to send out to Amazon or to Walmart, let's say we're sending out 500 cake domes. So it's just, you just have to label it, you, and you call a truck and it takes it to their fulfillment center and they distribute it to, to the customers. Then let's say sometimes you run out of items, so on a small basis, we do, like, we'll send out a item of, one item like this. One, if we run out in the fulfillment centers, we'll ship it out ourselves, but that's not big numbers. It's, it's just like a little shipping out, and these items are already pre-packed. Everything that comes from China is already, or from India, from Italy, or already come, in the case pack, it's already in another box that's already ready to ship. So there's no, you just pull it out of the box, you put on the label, and the UPS truck and, or the FedEx or the mailman comes. These trucks are there once a day. They come, end of the day, the mailman, the, these things, they come once a day and they distribute it, they give it out to the customers.
Mr. Friedman, I made statements. When I make statements, I'm explaining things, but I can't testify. Only you can testify. I told the board that you have eight tractor trailers a month, roughly two a week. Those are the tractor trailers that are coming in with product and going out. Is eight the right number?
Yes, pretty much eight. It's, could be, it, it's sometimes there's two out and the next week there's two in. But sometimes there's three out and then two in. Sometimes there's four in and it's just, it's not, it's not in and outs. It's pretty much, that's the number, about eight, it's about two trucks. Usually we get a truck in or a truck out a week.
And I also said that you have small vehicles, UPS, USPS and FedEx, and that those individual trucks come to your property, not all day long, but they come in once.
At the end of the day, they come and all the items that we got to ship to the customers goes out to the customer.
You and your partner, two people, two full-time workers, or up to four people, and two or three people who are part-time to help unload when the trucks come in.
Correct.
That's the whole business?
That's the business, yeah.
The board's listening carefully. These are the things that if they chose to approve, would be in the resolution saying, this is what they're approving. You're comfortable with all that?
Yeah.
Ken, if I could just interrupt, because usually someone else does, but it's not here. But the eight, the eight tractor trailer per month, is that some, right? It'll be in the resolution, as you noted. Is that a limit your, Mr. Friedman's willing to accept?
I was going to say, so that he doesn't get in trouble during a seasonal, if the number could be 12, 12 a month is something that's easily, it gives the growth that's necessary and keeps us out of trouble when there's an extra truck that comes.
If this business is successful, do you anticipate hiring more full-time, part-time employees? Like, are there any plans for expansion or would you just kind of, at the same level it is today?
Pretty much, it's, this is the business. It's not like it's, it comes and it goes. It's pretty much, that's what it is.
I'll make it, you've already reached the success level that you were looking for.
Right.
So no plans for future expansion?
Yeah, so the two sites in Lakewood on Brook Road, there's no intent to close those and move those operations entirely here or?
Yeah, I want to move them over.
Those are being closed, they're coming.
Coming all here. So what you have said, two and two is maximum that you'll have, okay.
Very close.
And then I just want to clarify so I understand it too. So tractor trailers that come to the site, that's all the goods in the storage containers from wherever you're importing it. You then break them down into individual shipments on pallets, shrink wrap them. They then get put back in a tractor trailer and then go to the fulfillment center?
Yes.
Do you have any additional, like, box trucks that are doing any traffic from the site?
It's part of the, usually, that's part of the trucks that come during the week. That's usually we have, the two trucks that usually come are part of those, sometimes the box trucks, sometimes they're tractor trailers.
Okay.
It depends how much you ship out.
So the box trucks are counted in the 12 per month?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make sure. And then you don't have any additional, like, fleet vehicles that you do any individual deliveries? It's all just by USPS, UPS or FedEx once at the end of the day?
And a follow-up to that, you indicated, that's correct. Follow-up is you have no overnight storage of trucks on the property. Previously, the 12 trucks were allowed to be stored on the property, so you have no overnight truck storage?
No.
If an Amazon fulfillment center is out of something, will they, like, drive an Amazon truck to you to pick it up or?
I have to schedule an appointment if you come.
Okay.
Do you have your own trucks?
No, no trucks.
And the hours of business are five days a week?
Right, five days a week from 10 to 5.
10 to 5.
Yeah.
So trucks are not coming at night?
No, no. It's, we make appointments when we, business hours, we make appointments.
Okay, so work, workdays, okay.
And with regards to the tractor trailers, they can be unloaded same day, correct? So they will not be there overnight either? So once they're done unloading?
It doesn't, they, they sit there, it's called live loads. They, you, they come, you unload it, and they go.
Okay.
And that, those days, those trucks come by appointment and also your part-time employees know to come?
Right.
So you have everybody there to unload.
Right, correct.
Andy, so if we put 12 trucks per month into the resolution and the property is subsequently sold, that 12 trucks per month stays with the property?
It does, it runs with the land.
Thank you.
If I may, I was going to do this at the end, but I think it segues perfectly there. When this board acts and the resolution is drafted, it's supposed to be recorded at the county clerk so that it stays with the property in perpetuity. All too often, it doesn't happen. I assure you that the resolution will be recorded, it'll be attached to a declaration of restriction and will be recorded at the county clerk and will follow the property.
Ken, I would think that would be true of any applicant, any applicant you represent, not just this one, but yes.
Thank you. I have nothing further of.
Questions from the board?
Uh, yes, I do. Your current space, how, how big, you said there's two?
Yeah.
How, how big, how, how big of a space are we talking, combined?
There is a, there's a nice amount of space. There's one.
Square footage wise?
Right. I would say it's a very long building and it's not so wide. I would say it's probably, that building is probably like 6,000 square foot, I would say. And then the other one is a smaller one. There is about, I would, it's, it's maybe not even 1,000 square foot, it's smaller. It's a smaller.
So about 7,000 square feet?
Around.
And how, and how big are we going here?
Just, right about 14,000 square.
So you're about doubling?
Right.
Okay, so currently you have how many trucks a month?
We have eight trucks a month.
Okay, but, okay. And you're doubling your space?
Right, because now it's very tight. It's not, there's no space. We, we sometimes have to push off the shipment because there's no space in there. It's a small, it's, also, it's not, it's not, let's say, I'm making it right, you want to have space, you should be able to, now when I get it, I have to get a item from the back, we got to move everything from the front. You can't get through it, you know, it's like all stuck inside. If you have space, you could take this and then, everything is organized. When you have, when it's organized, it works.
So you do anticipate, you do anticipate growth?
Hundred percent. What I'm saying, that's part of, you're always going to grow.
So I know, Mr. Pape, you, you said about these, maybe going to 12 trucks a month. I'm not quite sure of the enforcement and I don't know how that, how do we keep track of that?
Right, and if you do anticipate some growth, will there be additional employees? Right, and if you do anticipate some growth, will there be additional employees?
Not more than what we have there. No, because we, we take now, we don't need those extra employees to unload the containers. We don't need them there. We don't have, they just come when you have to unload the container. So if you get, if you grow, you just hire more employees and you're good.
So you're gonna have more employees?
Right, right. We're gonna have the full-time five instead of, instead of having, um, the, the two and plus the three, the three, um, part-time.
You've got two full-time, three part-time.
Right.
What is the state?
So the part-times, the, the, the part-time only come when the container comes. That could be, they don't come, they're not there every day.
But if, but if your business grows in this twice size of what you have now, you're going to need more employees.
Right, that will hire those, you'll have, the, the extra part-time will become full-time and that'll be enough.
And then maybe you will have more part-time? You will hire additional part-time?
No, because those people, when, when a container comes, we just need more manpower to unload. It's not more work. We just need more manpower to unload it. So the, the people who are part-time become full-time and they'll just help. A container comes at a time, it takes the same amount of people to unload a container on that day.
So are you saying you'll have more container deliveries then?
He's, if you grow, you just need more people to ship out, more...
But you would have, but you'd also have more deliveries, you're saying?
Right, if, if you grow.
So there's the potential to have more than 12 tractor trailers a month?
You're going from eight to 12. You're giving me the space.
And I think, just, I know that you're not trying to mislead the board in any way.
It's not so clear, I'm sorry.
You've got five employees now. These men have been with you for a number of years.
Yeah.
Some of them come part-time and some come full-time.
Right.
You anticipate that if your business does grow, that you'll have those five all be full-time?
Yeah, and you don't even need those five time. I don't know if you know how the business works, but it's not like it's very, you get a container, it's not a lot of work now to get it out. It's, the, the pallets are there, you just have to just label it on and then you call the truck and they take it out. It's not like you need more manpower in the, in the warehouse now. It doesn't, it, you know, half a day, we're not wrapping and sending out pallets, yeah? We, it's, you're...
If your business exploded, you wouldn't fit in this building.
Right.
What you're offering to this board as restrictions would prevent you from growing in that explosion and you'd have to find another location. Are you aware of that?
Yes, it doesn't fit.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could just clarify too, right? So the applicant's proposing eight parking spaces. Uh, one of those is an ADA space, right? So there's seven non-ADA spaces. So would the applicant agree to a condition that not more than seven employees, maximum, if it ever expanded, seven full-time employees?
Absolutely.
Right, and then the fire official on these sites typically requires fire lane striping and signage along all access houses. You know, obviously there's a large expanded pavement area for turning and all that kinda things. Would the applicant agreeing to Title 39 enforcement on the property, that would allow the town to, you know, if they're parking in fire lanes or they're, you know, someone that's not handicapped is parking in the handicaps parking space, you know, they could then issue tickets? Does the applicant have an issue with that, Ken?
No, not at all. In fact, it's something we like to see. We like to petition the governing body for Title 39 enforcement so that we know that the police can come on our property and enforce all of the signs, all of the striping. So a Title 39 designation on-site is acceptable.
Yeah, and, and then just to give the board clarity too, right? So, you know, sometimes we see some of these sites that have like a 12-foot travel lane and then an eight-foot shoulder to like the curb along the property frontage. So then are people parking, you know, along the property frontage? Here, you don't have that excessive shoulder, so like, it's, they gotta park on-site generally, right? So you've got the seven non-ADA spaces and then you've got the fire lane and Title 39. So if it does become an issue with more employees, parking where they're not supposed to park, we have provisions in the resolution for code enforcement to get involved if, if they're operating beyond what they, you know...
Then you'll just have to find another place to go.
And the, and in terms of the seven employees, that includes the, because we're using the term employee, but that would include the two principals.
Yes.
So it's really like five employees, two principals?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And then just also clarity for the board too, right? So there's only two loading bays on that existing loading dock that's there? So that also limits how many tractor trailers can come into the site at a given time, you know, and, and how many can be unloaded and unloaded at a given time. So that also helps regulate how much. It's not like it's one loading dock along the whole where it's 12 bays and you got 12 trucks. You know, you've got two at the end there that kinda restricts operation as well.
What would be the mechanism of enforcement of this arbitrary number of 12, um, trucks coming in? Well, how do we?
If I may, you, oh, I'm sorry.
Like anything else, we'd have to be able to observe it. So, I mean, if they're bringing...
And is that possible?
Is it possible? Sure, if I, if I had somebody sitting out there count...
Sitting on it, yeah.
Sitting on it and watching it?
And you're not gonna be able to have somebody sitting on it?
Correct. So, uh, but to that point, uh, if this business gets so busy, there's gonna be a backlog of, of trucks or traffic. Or sure enough, you know, my, my phone rings off the hook for the slightest infraction or, uh, uh, that happens on any site. So if there's, if there's, uh, a complaint that comes in, obviously we're gonna go out there and sit for as long as, you know, or, you know, people are pretty detailed now. So we get videos as well. So if there's a count, then it'll be addressed then. Am I sitting out there the entire time? We have other responsibilities? No. But if it becomes an issue where we get the complaints, yes, we can go out there and sit.
And just to give some addition to that, right? So, you know, had everything been located at the back of the site as far as parking and loading, you know, with the railroad right at the back, it'd be a little bit harder from the public right away to maybe see what's going on on the property. Kind of with everything being at the front of the site, they've got a pretty large driveway opening, it should be somewhat readily visible from the public right away if they're not operating kinda with how they say they were gonna operate. Um, you know, and then also with code enforcement, right? If, John, someone complains about something, you guys have the right to enter our site and see what's going on too.
Correct, it's a commercial site. So we, uh, our ordinance provides, uh, access to do the inspections. Not only ourselves, but the Fire Bureau. And as Charlie indicated, uh, this site, because all the business happens up in the front and not in the back, uh, anybody riding up and down that, that roadway can easily see any backflow of, of trucks being parked or waiting to come in. Uh, you know, and just driving by on a daily basis. You see two one day, you see another two the next day. I mean, it's easy to do the math. You know, if you see a truck there every once in a blue moon, then you know you're within, probably within that number that, that they're specifying tonight. These things are extremely, in anything, any stipulation that you put in, uh, you know, as far as number of employees, I'm not walking into any business and counting heads. Most of the time, it's something that's triggered either by complaint or the inspection's done by the Fire Bureau on a, on a yearly basis. When they go in, they go in unannounced most of the times. So, uh, you know, that mechanism's there so we can enforce it. Without putting any kind of limits, you're giving a free-for-all. So at least there's a number there that if need be, we can quantitatively say, alright, you've gone over the amount, now it's a violation. So a number is always better than no number at all. Whether we get to sit there and count every truck, probably not. But if it needs to, at least we have something that we can go by.
Okay, and, um, no, um, thoughts of like having a showroom where people come and buy products?
No.
No, okay.
No customers, no visitors, no retail, no showroom?
And that'd be part of the condition of the, uh... One other question. Before you said at times you do need to be your own fulfillment center at times?
No, it's, that's, we, every day we ship out a certain amount of products. That's our, the UPS and the mail. But that's why, because there's always something that we add up, those items we ship out.
So you're not shipping directly to customers? You're shipping to Amazon?
That's the main and we have a little bit to...
Through UPS is what you're saying.
The FedEx, the UPS and the mail is to customers.
Okay, so that, that would be considered fulfillment? He's, it's part fulfillment center on his side?
It's fulfilling using the small logistic system of UPS and FedEx, yeah.
And can I clarify, right? So that's one of maybe UPS, USPS and FedEx coming. At the end of the day, it's one pickup and departure from the site. It's not multiple pickups and departures throughout the day?
Right.
And I think it's important, so there comes a time, product is shipped out to Amazon or Wayfair and they, they're out. He's notified that there's a shortfall. He has the opportunity so that the customer's not lost to send something to their customer.
Usually on top of it, to make sure that they have it in stock.
But his, that's, that's the business.
Okay.
Questions? Just for clarification again, as we went over this a while back Sunday. You said just for like administrative work, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
No, yeah.
Mr. Ryan?
Good.
Mr. Roscoe? Okay. Mr. Pape?
Your choice. The next witness is about 10 minutes. It can be before or after the break, Mr. Chair.
It's time for a break, sir.
Wonderful.
Eileen, can we take 10 minutes, please?
The board will now take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 9:00 PM.
Thank you. Eileen, would, please bring us back?
The meeting will now reconvene.
Thank you. Mr. Pape?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Can we get Mr. Reddasty's credentials on the record?
Mr. Reddasty, please share with the board your professional and educational background.
Uh, yes, I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey. I graduated with a bachelor of architecture degree from NGIT in 1992. Became licensed New Jersey in 1996. I'm a principal at Perez and Reddasty Associates, an architecture firm in Cranbury, New Jersey. Presented in front of dozens of municipalities throughout New Jersey and I've presented in front of this board.
We accept your credentials, Mr. Reddasty.
Thank you.
Mr. Reddasty, what exhibits will you rely upon? And I think we'll mark them in just for safe, safekeeping.
Okay, so I have, uh, I have two exhibits. Both of these exhibits were previously submitted with no revisions from, from the submission.
Okay, let's see. I'm looking, Eileen, for the architectural exhibit.
Yeah, the two drawings are dated 10/10/23. So October 10th, 2023, and it's sheet CS1 and CS2.
Looks to me like those are the A14 plans, the A14 plans.
Clicking to mark these?
They look already pre...
Okay.
Pre-labeled. If you could identify, perhaps stand alongside of it, tell us what we're looking at. If you could describe, actually in narrative, if you could describe what the building looks like today and then what you plan on doing to the building?
Okay, so I have here sheet CS2 in front of me, which are the building elevations, the colorized version. The existing building is a one-story warehouse, approximately 7,814 square feet. It's a neglected, masonry structure constructed of painted block walls. The front of the existing building has a trialled roof, stucco finish, in yellow and red, but the sides and rear consist of painted and bare blocks in various different colors. At the top of the block walls is a gable roof constructed of roof trusses. The total building height is approximately 24 feet tall to the ridge. At the rear of the structure is a large exterior loading dock and has an area of about 4,259 square feet. This raised concrete area is covered by a shallow-pitched metal roof trusses supported by steel columns. The interior of the building consists of folded spaces for storage with approximately 13-foot-six high ceiling, as well as a series of small office and utility spaces that have been constructed over the years. So as the architect, the client requested that I redesign the building to make it more usable, as well as more attractive from the street. While I was redesigning the exterior of the building, I thought of ways to visually reduce the mass of the long building structure that is visible from the roof. I worked closely with the board planner, Jennifer Bean, while designing the building elevation. Some of these improvements include removing the rough stucco finish at the front facade and adding a thin brick water table that extends vertically in some areas to break up the horizontal lines of the building. The wall areas above the water table would be clad with a new smooth stucco or eithus finish. I accentuated the front entry by adding a new glass storefront protected with a new standing seam metal roof canopy and decorative panels. I also added a new cross-gabled roof that would make it visually clear that that's the front entry. The entire gable roof would have a new, long-life standing seam metal roof instead of the old asphalt roof shingles. To break up the roof plane, in addition to the gable roof at the entry, I also added a couple decorative dormers, as well as a central coukola. The low lines, as well as the dormers and coukola, would give the building more of a rural feel instead of the look of a typical warehouse. In the rear of the building, I enclosed the raised loading dock area utilizing the existing steel roof structure and columns. Also, we are proposing a future addition at the rear of the building of approximately 20 feet by 50 feet two inches, and that's 1,003 square feet. The roof on this structure would extend the existing low pitch roof to keep the same look. The walls of the rear and side of the building would coordinate with those of the front of the building with two colors of stucco and standing seam metal roofs at the new doorways. When I designed the color schemes, I used comfort colors, such as a subtle green, grays and tals. This will help the building fit into the landscape and make it appear as if it belongs. There will be no building-mounted signage. However, there will be 24-inch-high, non-internally illuminated building egress channels at the northernmost portion of the front facade.
Mr. Reddasty said non, non-illuminated?
Yes, non, non.
Oh, okay.
So it would just be individual metal channel numbers. The interior of the building would be renovated and would no longer include refrigeration. There would be no building-mounted lights at the rear of the building except for some reset-down lights at the roofs at the exit doors. These lights will shine down directly to the ground and they'd be located over the doors, these small roofs that we added. That would, it wouldn't, uh, wouldn't go anywhere except for down.
If, there was a question raised about there being six doors to the building? If you could just describe the purpose of all those doors, the firefighting elements of those doors?
Yes, so there are several doors throughout the building. I think there's six total exterior doors. The one set of doors, the front entrance. We have another door over by the loading areas. If somebody had to come out, go to the exterior of the building to help load from the exterior, they could go out that door. I have two doors in the back for egress purposes. If this is all storage, there'll be racking, shelving here. There's certain distances that you have to be for exit doors, so that's why there's one in each corner. There's one over here, so there's no dead end here. There's one over in this corner. This area is raised pretty high off the ground, there can't be any doors in that area. So in order to keep our exit distances, we put the doors here where there used to be an overhead door that we're removing and putting that in.
So each of those doors has a very specific purpose?
Uh, yes, and, and they're pretty much all for egress purposes.
So, Mr. Pape, we're, we're looking at seven doors?
Um, is that seven?
Two double doors?
Four, well, six.
Six.
Six doors, but two, two of the doors are double doors. So six openings.
And the one in the back?
There's one, two, three, four, five, six. So there's two in the back, one on the right side.
I'm looking at the elevation, I'm sorry.
There's six doors and then there's the two...
Two overhead doors.
Uh, like overhead doors, yeah.
Okay, all right, got it.
You said the colors quickly. I, taupe, green, gray?
Yes.
Taupe, green, gray, so the... Tote green, gray. So the building blends.
We wanted it to blend into the landscaping and have a rural feel.
I think that's it, yes?
That's all.
Okay. Mr. Reddasty, oh, do you think that you earned Ms. Beam's approval?
Um, she told me she liked it. She's not here to speak to that, so I can't really speak for her.
Mr. Reddasty, on top of the cupola?
Yes.
I don't see a wind, a wind vane.
Oh, I could, I could add a weather vane.
You know.
I will say, we take no issue with the architecture and I certainly think it's a significant improvement from what's there currently.
Yes, it is. All right, thank you. Questions for the architect?
Is that stairs? In the back? Uh, yes, because. How many? We're looking at seven risers. So seven, seven or less risers?
Not on both.
Uh, no, well, the one on the left and the one on the right is the last.
And those are not rail?
Uh, yes, the re-rail, right. Uh, yeah, they both have four inch high guard rails leading the construction.
Mr. Reddasty, there's going to be security cameras and stuff to protect, you know, to protect the facility?
Yes, there would be.
Our clients indicated, yes, there'll be a security camera system.
Okay. I'd like to piggyback on what Mr. Merillo was talking about with the stairs. At the base of the stairs, shouldn't there be a concrete pad for maintenance purposes if you're adding a mower? You don't want them crashing into the steps?
Yes, there would be, there would be at the stairs, there would be a concrete pad at the top. Then there would be the stairs and there would be a concrete pad at the bottom.
Okay, but on your plan, you don't actually show it. It would be on the engineer's plan.
Well, that's why I don't show it because that becomes, that becomes the engineering.
Yeah, I know there's a little.
My drawing and their drawing.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's there because I don't want to see the stairs getting banged by a mower.
Yeah, that would be a four inch thick concrete slab.
Okay.
I believe the engineer answered that there was no pad. It was just going straight into grass earlier.
No, no, no.
No, he said pad.
Did he say pad?
No, I didn't.
I didn't hear that.
He said there's a pad and then there's grass.
Yeah, so I think per building code, they're required to actually have a four by four pad.
Okay, so it's going to be on the, hey, no matter, as long as you're putting that on the record, that's fine.
We will have. I think it was that there wasn't going to be sidewalks, but there would be a pad at the bottom. That is a code requirement, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I just want to ask a clarified question. So there was, I think Mr. Reddasty alluded to like the main entrance as being a storefront, right? So that's just visually where you enter the lobby to the office space. It's not a, there's no retail sales at the site. Just want to clarify that. And then I just want to note too, right, so the existing covered loading dock at the back that's being enclosed, you know, it's pretty large as it is and they're just enclosing it, so it could be utilized for storage of goods or the prior owner could have utilized it for storage of goods and things like that. So it's, you know, while it's going from 7,000 to 14,000 square feet, you know, it's an area that could have been used by a prior owner for storage. So, you know, it's not a one-for-one, but you know, it's not like we're getting a full 7,000 square foot addition for warehousing purposes.
Understood. Thank you, Charlie, for pointing that out, yeah.
Was that a boat in that picture a couple of slides back?
Came with the property.
Go back a couple of slides. Yeah, there's a boat there.
It was a dumping. It was a dumping ground, Major?
Yes, it was. That was one of the violations that was issued against the property. I believe it, it may still be on the property, correct? Or has it been taken care of? It's gone?
Okay.
If the boat's still there, I'll come grab it.
Unless it's an inch of water, you're not getting far.
I do have another question.
Go ahead.
Off the, off these egresses going down the stairs, is there a walkway if, if to?
Inside the building?
No, outside the building. So somebody, there's, there's an emergency inside the building. They use the egress. They get down to the bottom stairs. They're just walking onto grass to?
Right, so, so this is just grass currently in the back of the building?
So there's no walkway around the building to the front of the building?
A walkway, but those, we don't anticipate those doors being used on a regular basis.
Oh, you said the egress.
But they're for fires.
Anybody somewhere?
If, if there's a fire, it'd be going down the stairs.
Right, and then those people who have left the fire have to go onto the grass and walk on grass all the way around to get to the front of the?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions? No. John, we're good?
We're good.
Okay. Christine?
Good.
Charlie?
Good, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, Mr. Pape, let's hear from?
Mr. Scott Kennel?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scott Kennel is our traffic expert. I think he's testified here once or twice before. We'll place his credentials on the record and go right to his element of the presentation. Mr. Kennel, share.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm with McDonough and Ray Associates, 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquan. I have approximately 40 years of traffic and transrotation planning experience. I've testified before this board as well as the Howell Planning Board on a number of occasions, on over 2,000 applications throughout the state. And I've been qualified by New Jersey Superior Court as a traffic expert.
All right, we'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
I think that if you could comment on a couple of things, we'll comment on the controls of coming out of the property. If you could comment the onsite circulation and if you could comment on. Can't get the word.
Mr. Kennel, excuse me. So I think what we really want to hear is not only just that, but Miller Road itself.
Yes.
Yes. What's the load on it? The UPS and the FedEx? You know, every day with the mailman coming, you know, you have regular traffic.
Correct.
And then we're talking about 12 large box trucks slash tractor trailers a month.
A month.
Coming and going, right? So let's hear it.
All right, well, again, we submitted a traffic report dated May 3rd, 2023. And as part of that, we did data collection at 547 and Miller Road back in October of 2022. Based on those traffic counts during the peak hours, the two-way traffic flow on Miller Road along the site frontage is approximately 230 vehicles. And during the afternoon peak hour, it's approximately 360 vehicles. So it's a moderate volume, but not as significant as other roadways in the township. Understanding the, the uses of the property and the, of the building and the statement of operations, we're projecting the, the peak hour trips to be approximately five vehicles during the morning and afternoon. It's a minimal impact when you consider the, the size of this building. And we analyzed the site driveway and, you know, we've analyzed study locations and we rated from A to F. This driveway will operate at level service B, well within the acceptable range for levels of service. I think the important thing that happens with the site improvements is we eliminate the northerly driveway, so we're only creating one point of access to and from the property. That's always a good thing to consolidate that. So if you have one location or one intersection, it's been designed to accommodate the large wheelbase vehicles as well as the passenger vehicles that'll serve the site. Those turning templates, plans have been prepared by Lou Zogner's office. And it's been designed, the pavement area has been designed to accommodate the large wheelbase vehicles accessing the loading docks, the vehicles that have to get to the refuse vehicles. And in my opinion, that this is an improved site layout to have a more efficient onsite operation. And then we've segregated the parking, so the parking's removed from the loading activity, which provides eight parking spaces. So in my opinion, this site has been improved to be a more efficient site circulation. And the fact that we're consolidating to one access point is a better situation for Miller Road as far as only one point of conflict versus two.
And the fire bureau?
My, my understanding is they've signed off on us.
Chief Parkin did in November.
Okay. And there's turnaround for the fire trucks there?
We have a significant pavement area which can accommodate the larger fire trucks. And I'm in agreement with the proposal to limit the tractor trailers to and from the south because you have the, you know, you have these awkward intersections to the north. You know, the skewed intersection and they're, they're smaller type intersections.
So the larger trucks, no right turn out of the property?
That's correct.
And we're going to put signage there as such?
Correct.
All right, okay. So we, I know we said there was no signage. We're going to need?
We're going to add sign. We'll work with Charlie on that.
All right, okay. Charlie?
I think that's really all I have. I don't really have much from a traffic perspective. I think they did some conservative analysis in their projected build condition. Typically, there's a background growth rate you use to project what the future condition's going to be. It's like 1%. I think, Mr. Scott, you guys used like 10% growth rate or something like that.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I mean, really from a traffic perspective, you know, the really only thing that I have is like the condition of Miller Road obviously as it sits is like pretty bad. Can you provide some testimony regarding like peak hour trips that you're generating from the site in the context of like what the existing traffic volumes are for the peak hour on Miller Road?
Well, as I, as I mentioned, the, the PM peak hour, we have approximately 360 vehicles. We're adding five vehicles. So it's a very small percentage of the overall traffic.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, it's up to the board, right? Like, you know, if this was a big fulfillment center, you know, that was adding, you know, significant amount of truck traffic day, resurfacing the road would be like certainly warranted. You know, your board has a discretion to require, you know, pro rate of share contribution. So, you know, five trips compared to 360 is going to be a certain percentage. You know, the app, we could, the township could figure out what the cost to resurface Lanes Pond, you know, Miller Road from Lanes Pond to the county route. Make them do some kind of monetary contribution that would help the town resurface the roadway in the future and reduce the financial burden. Ken, is the applicant opening to something like that?
Mr. Chair, during the break, I had the opportunity to talk with our client. That's one way of approaching it. Another way is to, I suggested to Charlie that maybe we take a look at milling the a half width in front of our property. What I would ask is an opportunity to meet with Charlie, assuming that the board is considering this favorably prior to a memorialization, we go meet with Charlie and figure it out so that we can go back and place it on the record.
We'd work with the, the township and the, and the crews and the plans?
Yeah.
For, for resurfacing?
Yeah, I think we could come to some mutual agreement with the township.
We need to know where Miller Road is in the plan, right? Because we have a, an overall plan, correct, John?
Correct.
So, you know, absolutely.
Yeah, there's multiple avenues. We could require them to, you know, resurface the full width across the frontage, the half width. They can make a pro rate of contribution. So if the town is going to resurface, you know, within the next five years, it could be a percentage based off of their anticipated construction costs. There's, there's a couple avenues.
I'm very comfortable that working with Charlie and Justin Yost, we can figure it out.
Thank you, Mr. Pape. Your client would agree to it as well?
My client would agree to it. Can't break the bank, but my client will agree to it.
Okay. So, board members, for the traffic engineer. Yeah, Mr. Kennel, you don't anticipate, I know because the amount of volume is going to be minuscule, you don't see an issue at any time that two tractor trailers cannot be on, on this property at the same time without getting into idling on Miller Road?
Oh, no, no. I mean, we have two loading docks and based on their volume, I wouldn't expect that to be an issue. And we have area, excess pavement area to stage onsite if there should be a situation.
And that would also include any vehicles backing up onto Miller Road? Everything would be able to be done on the site to go out straight?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And that including the UPS going into that loading dock? Because I don't think we, with the engineer, we went over the loading spot. That's just for tractor trailers or is that going to be?
I, it could be for box trucks or UPS if it's available. I mean, again, based on my, from my understanding, it's very unlikely you'd have both bays occupied by tractor trailers so that there is that opportunity to have the empty bay used by the quick pickup by the UPS or FedEx vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ryan? You? Mr. Roscoe? Mr. Kent?
Would there ever be a reason for two trucks to be on Miller Road? You, you could not have two trucks on Miller Road simultaneously. Back to one coming, one going, you'd have to, some kind of planning.
That'd be almost like a one in million situation. I mean, it's, it's, with the volume of trucks that they're processing here, it's, it's very unlikely you'd have two tractor trailers passing one another on Miller Road.
Mr. Merillo?
Tractor trailer, like, what, like the big tractor trailer? What was it, 18-wheelers, like the big tractor trailers? And so those, so there's enough room where they come in, they're going to be backing into the loading dock.
That's correct.
So on, on the property itself, they have plenty of room to do all that maneuvering?
That's correct. And that's why we have that one appendage of pavement area right in that area to accommodate. We extended the pavement so that there would be enough room for a truck to pull up into that and be able to back into the, into the. The loading docks.
Gotcha.
That's the only reason we have that added pavement, so that it can be done comfortably onsite.
Okay.
And, and Charlie, it's all, that pavement's all contained outside of the buffer, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Are we good with the, any more questions for the engineer? Okay, Mr. Kennel, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our final witness is Mr. Mark Remsa, professional planner. If you could come forward and share with you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. 2024 marks my 44th year in the field of planning. So in the state of New Jersey, I'm licensed as a professional planner and a landscape architect. With regard to my educational attainment, I have a Bachelor of Science in Environmental Planning and Design, a Master of City and Regional Planning, and a Master of Business Administration with a concentration in finance, all from Rutgers, the State University.
We accept your credentials, sir.
Mr. Remsa, you've heard the fact witnesses, you've heard the, the property owner and the potential occupant of the building. I'm going to ask if you could take the board through the necessary proofs to earn the use variance really and if you could identify the facts that were placed on the record that support those conclusions.
Yes, I, I will. So before I, I launch into the proofs, I always like to provide what's called, I call, a planning framework. And the planning framework is the basis on which the proofs are based. Some of the items I'm going to mention are pretty obvious, but I think for the record, I have to state them. So the property itself is developed with what I call a light industrial building. It's a, it's a former warehouse for, for watermelon distribution. The building itself is set quite far back on the property. So that makes the fact that we've got parking in the front yard, we've got loading docks.
Mr. Remsa, not to interrupt you, but I think we understand what's on the site and kind of how it's proposed, how it's currently developed, what's being proposed. If you could maybe just hit on the, the planning proofs.
So the reason why I was saying that is because those are new unique features because we've got a combination of different types of variances. We've got the bulk variance, I mean, the use variance was D1 variance. But there are also some C1 variances, basically hardship variances because we can't change the location of the building and we can't change those facts about the building. So, so that's why I'm giving that framework to provide the basis as I, as I get into my testimony. And so you've got this building and I've visited the building, I've, I've visited the surrounding area, been inside the building. The building, when I was there, was dilapidated and you saw evidence of the. and you saw evidence of the graffiti and so on and so forth. So, uh, and the owners have stabilized that building since. And so the surrounding uses, um, and I'm not gonna belabor it, but to the north is the, the tree farm, to the east is the railroad, um, and farther woods, and then the, the trailer, uh, mobile home park. To the south is a mixed use. We've got, um, a dumpster service business, and when I was there, it looked like there was also a residence on the property. And then to the west, across the street, is a, a large wooded lot. So essentially, this is sort of an isolated piece of property. Uh, I think I heard the chairman talk about it, somewhat rural area, which, which I agree. And so we've got, uh, these different types of uses that surround the property. And of course, it's in a residential zone, uh, the, the, they are, uh, uh, E-3 residential zone. And we've also heard that there's a very low intensity of traffic generation. We've heard, uh, that the hours are not even the typical warehouse type of, of, of usage. Um, so, it, it, and from my planning perspective, it's a low-intensity non-residential use on, on this property. And we would be reusing and redeveloping a piece of property that has been neglected for many years. So, um, there are, there are a number of variances associated with this. I, I'll go through them quickly. I'm not gonna go through, uh, each section of the ordinance and so on and so forth. So, I talked about the, uh, D1 variance, the use variance, uh, which basically permits agriculture in single-family homes. And here we have a, a light industrial use, um, which is that, uh, uh, retail sales of, over the internet and then, uh, uh, sending out the product, storing the product, and sending it, uh, uh, to the, the end customer. We also have the minimum side yard setback where 30 feet is required. 26.4 feet exists, so that's an existing condition. Uh, we have a maximum, uh, lot coverage, um, uh, that's permitted to be 12.5% uh, and we're reducing it down, uh, almost 10% uh, from almost 35 to, to a little over 25%. Uh, we also have a non-conforming structure, not, uh, uh, not altered unless it's not violating setbacks. That's another, uh, uh, provision in your ordinance. Uh, that's prohibited, and we're proposing that. Uh, and that's because of the existing condition of the building. We have an accessory structure in the front yard. That's the trash enclosure. And that trash enclosure is gonna be well over 100 feet setback from the road. And it is in the front yard. Uh, it, it will, uh, barely be noticeable, um, because it's set so far back. Plus, it's being enclosed with an attractive masonry enclosure, plus it's gonna be landscaped. Um, also, uh, we heard, uh, the talk of the, uh, stormwater management, uh, in, in the buffer. That's prohibited, but we heard that that's necessary to convey the water, uh, uh, from the front to the back and not have it go on to the adjoining property. And also, the ordinance requires a four-season buffer, um, and, and we're not doing that. And the reason why we're not doing that is because to the south, it's a deciduous wooded area. It's, it's mature oak. And then to the north, um, uh, we, we need to get access around the building to service the, um, septic system that's gonna be, uh, built in behind. Um, so, uh, and then there is gonna be a lot of additional other landscaping provided. Um, the loading in the front yard, that's prohibited. I talked about the fact that that's an existing condition and that's being, um, uh, maintained. Um, so those are essentially the, uh, uh, variant, bulk variances that are associated with this D, D1 variance. So, I'm gonna talk about, uh, positive criteria first. We have to talk about how this, uh, proposal will promote the purposes of zoning. That's municipal land use law. And there I will, um, uh, cite the subsection, and then I'll paraphrase what they describe. So that's NJSA 40:55-2C, and that's to provide adequate light air and open space. Um, we're, uh, actually getting rid of a lot of that pavement that's out front, the, um, uh, existing, um, uh, part of the concrete foundation that, uh, was where the building that burned down. That's being cut back. Um, we're complying with, uh, what Jennifer talked about, having the, uh, 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 buffer being enhanced on the north side. We're maintaining the open area in the back, the, uh, the meadow effect, the milkweed for the monarch butterfly. So tho- those are all important aspects. And then we're maintaining the buffer that's to, to the south. The next one is G, to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses. In this case, it's an industrial use. And we're basically reusing that light industrial building. We're gonna renovate and redevelop it, and it's gonna become, uh, a much more, uh, attractive, um, uh, building. Uh, but it is gonna serve a purpose. It's gonna serve that, uh, distribution of those imported goods. Um, H, to encourage the, uh, and promote the free flow of traffic. And you heard Mr. Kennel talk about, um, how this is such a, a, a low, um, generator of traffic, uh, will have, um, uh, mi- minimal impact at all during the peak hours. Um, I, to promote a desirable visual environment. Um, clearly, what Mr. Restali talked about, the architecture improving that, it's, it's, it's gonna be a very attractive building reminiscent of, of more of that rural style. Landscaping's gonna be added, and the property's gonna be, uh, basically cleaned up and a lot of impervious removed. Um, J, and that's prevent urban sprawl and the degradation of the environment. We're reusing a property. We're not going and developing a greenfield. We're developing something that's been developed many years ago for a light industrial use, and we're now, we're reusing it and we're enhancing it. M, and that's to, uh, promote the more efficient use of land as well. Uh, uh, and it really piggybacks on the prior purpose that I talked about. And that's the renovation of, of, of a building. Uh, and all the energy that went into building that, constructing that building is gonna be saved, uh, by its, by renovating rather than tearing it down. So then I will always come back to A, and that's to promote the public health, safety morals, and general welfare. Given all the prior, uh, purposes of zoning that are being promoted, I believe it also promotes the public health, uh, safety morals and general welfare. Site suitability, that's the other part of, uh, the positive criteria. So, we must demonstrate that this site's particularly suited for this proposed use, for this proposed, um, warehouse type of use. Well, we're gonna be reusing and renovating and, uh, uh, a, uh, a prior, uh, warehouse. Uh, this site can easily accommodate the low amount of, of, of truck traffic, the low amount of employees, uh, rather easily. And also, um, uh, it, it fits into the surrounding air, area because this is somewhat of a more remote, uh, area and not surrounded by, uh, a, a lot of, uh, many residences at all. So, the negative criteria. So we must look at the impact of granting this variance on the surrounding land uses. So, to the north, I, I don't really see any negative impact to the, to the tree farm. As a matter of fact, we're remedying, uh, uh, an issue where, uh, an old septic system was built on that property and, and, you know, however that was, that's gonna be fixed. Uh, to the east, to the railroad, I, I see no negative impact to, to the railroad. To the south, the south is where the, uh, dumpster service is, uh, and, uh, that's located, uh, uh, right on the property line next to ours. And then the residence on that property is a little bit farther south. So, I don't see any significant impact by reusing the property, uh, for the proposed use. And then to the west, I see no impact to the, to the wooded area across Miller Road. So the last part of the negative criteria is that we have to, um, look at, does this substanti- this proposal substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance? Well, obviously, this is not a residential use, uh, and it's, uh, a former, uh, industrial, uh, light industrial use where that's being, uh, uh, reused on the property. But in, in your master plan, particularly your reexamination report from 2019, there are quite a few goals that, uh, point to how this proposal will advance those goals. So, uh, the first one is to maintain a consistency with the purposes of the municipal land use law. I'm not gonna repeat those that I just went over on the positive criteria, but it does promote quite a few of those. Uh, another is to, uh, continue to, um, uh, to continue to be a stable and diverse community through the provision of balanced land use pattern. And so we're reusing a former light industrial property. Uh, we're not going and, and developing more greenfields for that. So I, I feel that the proposed use on this particular piece of property would help stabilize because this property has fallen in, into decline. And you saw the photographs of how it was vandalized and so on and so forth. So, this will certainly, uh, help towards stabilizing, uh, the community, uh, in this particular part of the community. Another is to, uh, maintain and enhance a local economy that encourages the provision of more, more cost-effective public services and so on. So, in this case, we're taking a, a non-productive property and bringing it back to being productive. Um, uh, ratables are not, uh, a consideration for, for land use, but certainly, um, it helps, uh, uh, the, uh, aspect of the, of public services that are provided to the community because it, it does improve the ratable base.
Mr. Remsa, I would agree that, um, this property meets the negative criteria and does not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the master plan or the zone plan.
Okay, so, then, um, I, I won't go any further because I think your, your, uh, reexamination report does a, a wonderful job of explaining why it's important to stabilize and improve your, your, uh, uh, community. And I believe that this, this particular use will, will do that. So, in conclusion, I would say that the use variance, the D1 variance, and those bulk variances, uh, can be granted, um, uh, uh, because it promotes the purposes of municipal land use law. It occurs on a site that's particularly suited. It accrues no significant detriment to the public good and doesn't substantially impair, uh, the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Thank you.
And I would agree, um, that the site is particularly suited to the use. They're reusing an existing building, um, and we heard testimony that, uh, the traffic provided onsite will be low intensity, um, the traffic on...
So Christine, from eggs to watermelons to a nondescript location in the ARE3 zone, the criteria is being met?
Yes, so I mean, if the site, you know, if they were proposing, you know, to build a new building on a empty site where it didn't previously exist, I think, um, you know, they may, may not meet the criteria, but that's not the application before us tonight. Um, there's an existing warehouse building there that they're proposing to repurpose, um, modernize, uh, quite a bit. Uh, the testimony provided was that this use, um, while not agricultural in nature while, like the other warehouses, use, uses were, will, um, have less of a traffic impact than those uses did. And I think that's an important part of the particular suitability of this site that while it is a warehouse use in the ARE zone, um, they're only proposing a maximum of 12 trucks a month.
And Christine, so, what I've learned over the years here in Howell, you know, the, the eggs, they sat, they rotted. The watermelons, they sat, they rotted. And that's what kinda chased everybody away.
Well, hopefully, we won't have tabletop things rotting.
Absolutely. Fellow board members?
Um, yeah, Mr. Barolo pointed out something, it, it, it probably should be mentioned in Ms. Bean's report, and kudos to you for doing your homework, and I didn't, but, uh, she said a waiver is needed for no publicly usable site furnishings. Um, just to note, it's like bike racks and park benches and things like that.
Right, so...
We need a waiver for that.
Due to the size of the building, waiver is needed. But in this case, it really would not make any sense, I believe, to, um, you know, have a public space, um, where there's no public coming to the site.
Yeah, absolutely, just, just pointing it out because it's in the report.
So if they wanna put a bench on, on the side and they wanna sit on the bench outdoors, they, they need a waiver for it?
No, it's, uh, they need a waiver because they're not proposing a bench.
Okay.
Yes.
Otherwise, they don't need the waiver if they put a bench out there.
Alright, got it, alright, now, alright.
And just to add to that, we had it in our letter also, it's, you know, you heard there's no visitors to the site, it's just the applicant's employees and then, you know, furthering that, you know, the board not requiring sidewalk potentially along the frontage of contribution, no sidewalk from the right of way into the site. So, there's not really gonna be any public visiting the site, so there should not be a need for that.
Okay, great. Alright, do we wanna open this up to public or do we have any more questions?
I make a motion that we open to the public?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Elaine?
The board is now open to the public. If you're going to come up, state your name and your address. Thank you.
Russ Klaus, 320 Lanes Mill Road.
Mr. Klaus, just if I could swear you in, do you swear the testimony you give will be truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Mr. Kirk?
First, I'd like to start off with, uh, thanking the gentleman over here for being very thorough and asking a lot of questions tonight about this, about the site. Um, there's a lot of things here that, he's got seven waivers. Um, I think what we learned from the testimony today was he was inconsistent and evasive with all his testimony of what this property is gonna be used for. We started off with three to five workers, then it went to seven, eight trucks to 12. He's been very inconsistent, so...
Mr. Klaus, you know, do you have any questions for any of the professionals that testified this evening on this application?
No, I'm just stating, you know, the things that...
Alright, so you're just commentary?
Well, no, I'm not commentary, I'm just voicing my opinion of what I've observed tonight with the, with the applicant. I'm gonna get to the things that I have the problems with, I just, what, I'm not allowed to ask, say that?
Andy? Questions for the professionals?
Right, that, well, the, I think the chairman's only making the point, Mr. Klaus, we're at the point in the meeting where, where there are questions for their professionals opposed to get, whether you're for or against the site and why?
I pay taxes, I just wanna voice my opinion.
And you'll be given that opportunity?
I'm directly next to this property, I'm gonna be impacted more than anybody.
Yeah, no.
I went through a lot of stuff with the watermelon company, so I know exactly what happens here. He's asking for a lot of waivers. Um, I think at the end of the day, this is an agriculture area, residential. It's not suitable for warehousing. The prior, um, owners of their properties, which is obviously watermelon and eggs, that's all agriculture. So, I think, I got three buyers for my property now. They wanna use the same use. If we turn this into a warehouse and this is approved, well, then you'd have to approve either me or my buyers because it's the same zoning, I'm right next door. So, I don't think we should open up this road, uh, to warehousing. It's all residential, there's three homes that are already approved across the street that is residential. Kids are gonna be walking up and down that street, there's no curbs. The roads are crumbling apart. If you wanna pull that video up that you had on the roads, they're crumbling apart. So, I'm strongly suggesting the board to deny this applicant today. I don't think it has no business warehousing. I don't think it has no business warehousing in this zone, residential and agriculture. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to come up and speak? Not seeing, not hearing any? We got a motion to close? We got a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So, go ahead, Mr.
One thing I believe if we do approve this, we do need to have a stipulation on nighttime lighting because I don't think, shouldn't that be in the resolution?
Yes.
So we should maybe, because that, you know, I don't want to see that if we do approve it, I don't want to see this place lit up at night, and that will deter nighttime activity, which I think can always happen if we don't, if we're allowing lighting, it's going to encourage possibly going against what we want to do here. So do we have 25% or there's no need for lighting?
Charlie?
Solely up to the board's discretion on that, right? We've had instances where we require dimming. We had instances where it shuts off completely. I mean, for a site where they're saying their operations are not overnight and stop at 5:00 p.m., I don't think it's unreasonable to say by 7:00 p.m. all lights...
It shuts down.
They all shut down, other than, you know, around the building for security purposes.
Correct.
Okay.
And the building will have security.
Security camera system. We have no issue with the going, the site going dark. The only lights that would be on, the security lights, are the lights that are on the building at the doors. They're all in canopies, and they're all pointed straight down.
Christine?
I really have no issue with that. I think that's appropriate.
Okay.
Just getting back to those egresses on the backside where they have to go downstairs if there's a fire or some other emergency where they need to go down those stairs and their lack of there being walkways to bring those people to safety. Are they, do they need to have walkways in that situation?
Not that I'm aware of. I believe the building code just asks for a landing pad at the bottom. Once they get to that point, there's nothing that stipulates that there needs to be, I mean, think about a school, same kind of a thing. If they're exiting towards the back and there's an open area in the back, you're running on grass at that point. The fact that it's a pretty level surface, I don't see an issue or need really to start putting walkways in the back.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody's good?
And if we're to approve this, we're going with the fact that it's live load only, no stationary trailers, right?
Correct.
And one more thing, Christine or Andy could probably answer this because it was brought up by the public comment. If this was approved and he wants to sell his property, whether we approve it or not, they still would have to come back as a separate application. And just because the use, we're...
That's correct. Every, you know, this is still the ARE3 zone. Every application is heard on its own merit. I think we spoke, you know, about the particular suitability of this site. So which might be different than a house that has a residential home on it.
Mr. Mertens, are you speaking of other sites? You're saying whether it's precedent...
Yeah, like, in other words, dumpsters on the property that's right next to it, right? I guess that property has, is a business of dumpsters? Is that what I'm understanding?
I'm sorry, Mr. Sayah.
John? Next to this property, is there a dumpster business?
I don't know to be quite honest with you.
Okay. Okay.
I think Christine answered what I was trying to get at, so I think...
You good? All right. Mr. Pape, can we have a summation, please?
Very brief, Mr. Chair. I think that you heard that the property has been an industrial property going back to the 1970s. The resolution that was published by this board identified that we're going from 30 tractor-trailers a week to, down to 12 tractor-trailers a week, down to 12 tractor-trailers a month. That's the record that was made by the prior property owners. I think the most important things to bring to your attention are the improvements that the applicant is making to the property and the building, the areas that are currently in violation of the ordinance that are being cured. And I think the fact that you have a unique business with very strong commitments to controlling the volume of trucks that come and go, I think that combination of all those improvements and those restrictions makes this, as Mr. Mark Remsa stated, uniquely suited for the site. We respectfully ask that the board consider granting the relief subject to all the conditions that were placed on the record this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Thank you.
Okay, so it comes down to the board. Andy?
I'm not sure what we would talk an executive about. I'm just saying, unless it's attorney-client privilege, I mean, you can't deliberate in closed session.
Yeah, it's, it's either yea or nay. You do nothing, that's what you have. You do something, you get something.
Mr. Sayah, just for clarification, I would also stipulate as a condition of approval that this is a one-tenant operation, that at no time there be anyone else in this space other than the applicant performing the one function that he's testified to tonight.
Should we go as high as 12 trucks?
I think it's reasonable. I mean, there's 330 vehicles, you know, a day. 12 a month is not, you know, in my opinion, good, but that's, it's up to you, you know? There's the FedEx, the UPS, the garbage truck, the mailman. You know, they're all going up Miller Road. We're going to get a contribution, should this be approved in one way, shape, or form, to help with Miller Road because Miller Road needs help, right? It needs resurfacing. I don't know where Miller Road fits on the township's resurfacing plan, but, you know, this applicant has provided that they would work with the town to help at least a portion of that, prorated, of course. That's what I heard. Go ahead if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the use variance and preliminary major site plan with bulk variances with all of the conditions stated numerous as they are, as well as all of the waivers that were expressed as being needed by the professionals.
Okay. We got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Hughes, we got a second.
Mr. Chairman, in making that, I'm very sensitive to the neighbors' concerns about having warehousing and trucking on the street, but in my mind, we're sitting with a dilapidated, graffiti building that's going to still be dilapidated and graffiti. It's going to be improved. It's a very clean usage. You know, yeah, it's a business, but it's not like, as expressed in all of the testimony, it's not like we're putting this on a green field. It's, you know, it's already a dilapidated and potentially very unsafe building that's there.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Cantor. Mr. Hughes, we got a motion. Mr. Hughes, second it. Eileen Roelcall, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Just one quick statement. It is an AR3, and I think that's the intent of the zoning. And I'm kind of would have been leaning towards not approving this. However, because of the use and because of what Mr. Cantor just pointed out, I believe each application's going to have to come to this board. Not that I want to set a precedent that we approve this, this is going to be an issue because I'm only approving it because of the use. It's going to be very minuscule, and I do not believe it's going to be an impact on the neighborhood as much as if it was residential's going in and they're going to be affecting the environmental impact where it would be more disruptive with excavating and everything. This building is pretty well already set, the foundation, so I will vote yes on this.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah?
For the record, I believe that the positive and the negative criteria have been met. And for all other purposes, the site improvement is second to none if we did nothing. So for that reason and the low intensity, I vote yes.
Application is approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, all board members, thank you all, and good night.
Good night. Eileen, do we have any more business?
No business for tonight.
Okay, when's the next meeting?
Is March 11.
March 11?
Yes.
Oh, that's...
I'm surprised at that.
No, that's...
It's the day-after-daylight savings change.
Yes.
I will tell you right now, I'm not able to be there. I have a business function.
Oh, I thought you were going to tell me you're going to the Devils Rangers game or something. Didn't they just do that at the stadium?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll send you an email as well.
All right.
Thank you.
So March 11, everyone, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We got a motion. We got a second. All in favor?
All right.
All right. Eileen, we're adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned.